So I'm gonna step away for a second, might hear the cats meowing. It should be starting any minute now. I gotta go get these clothes from upstairs. Just wait for it to start, and I'll be back in a sec.
Recording in progress.
Denver City Council Broadcast Coverage Begins in One Minute. Coverage Begins in Thirty Seconds.
Yo Mac, yo Twin, I gotta step away for a sec, yo. Just hold it down. Any trolls show up, y'all already know what to do.
Hey Denver, it's time for the Weekly General Session of your Denver City Council. Tonight's coverage of Denver City Council starts now.
Salud Daniel, appreciate you tapping in. I'll be right back, y'all. I gotta go get ladies' chairs, clothes from upstairs.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. My name is Amanda Sandoval, I have the honor of presiding over the Denver City Council. Um, today is Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Tonight's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Jasmine, would you please introduce yourself? And let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Of course, thank you for having us once again. Hello everyone, my name is Sam Guzman with the CLC, joining you virtually through Zoom, along with my colleague Jasmine will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Please allow me a quick minute to give instructions in Spanish on how to access interpretation. Buenos dias a todos, mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC. Entendiendo que mi colega Jasmine estaremos interpretando la reunión de hoy en español. Si se une con nosotros virtualmente a través de Zoom, por favor busquen su pantalla un icono del logo que dice "Interpretación", oprimen ese botón y de ahí seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros presencialmente y está ahorita en la cámara, por favor busquen hacia el fondo, hacia la derecha, y controlar una asistente que le pueda dar audífonos para escuchar en español. Muchas gracias, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sam. Welcome to the Denver City Council Meeting of Monday, November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Council members, please join Councilmember, as they lead us, hold on. Councilmembers, please join Councilmember Gilmar as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember, please join Councilmember Gilmar as they lead us in the Denver City Council Land Acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities, and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Secretary, welcome. Councilmembers Torres, Jean, Albiol, here. Flynn?
Here.
Gilmar?
Here.
Gonzales Coteiras?
Here.
Heim?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Lewis? Parity? Romero Campo?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Madam President Sando?
Here.
Eleven members present. There are eleven members present. Council has a card. Council will now vote to either adopt or reject the mayor's proposed twenty-twenty-six budget. Councilmember Gilmar, we need a motion to adopt.
I move that the mayor's proposed twenty-twenty-six budget be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded by the comments from members of council. Councilmember Sawyer, start us out.
Thanks, Madam President. Um, I said last week and I will follow through again today. I am a no on this budget. Um, I really appreciate the hard work of the Department of Finance. You guys have done an extraordinary lift over the last two years in, um, with the migrant crisis, dealing with House of Thousands sprung on you halfway through the year in twenty-twenty-three, dealing with, um, uh, revenue that is falling significantly due to sales tax. Um, and I really wanna acknowledge you all and appreciate that. I'm not putting my name or my stamp of approval on this budget. I am extremely concerned about some of the things that have gone on, some of the things we see and hear this year as council members. I've been here six years and I've really never seen anything like it before. The lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, the lack of information sharing is incredibly frustrating. The lack of respect for our independent agencies is shocking. I think the biggest challenge is, if you look at Schedule one hundred, so it's the easiest place for everyone to look in the budget book and see what I'm talking about, page eighty-two, um, our charter speaks very clearly to the appropriation of dollars and city council's authority to appropriate dollars that are coming in. That's what the budget process is. There is also a very clear piece of language that was voted on by the voters several years ago that, um, requires that any new dollars that have come in have to be appropriated by city council. The charter is silent on what happens in a year like this year where our revenues are lower than our expenditures. And what that means is that city council is expected to have oversight over a budget with half of the information or less. And that is not acceptable. It is not something that I am willing to put my name on and my stamp of approval on. This budget, whether we vote yes or no as city council members by charter, becomes law no matter what. That's what the charter says. So you don't need my approval. And I think it's pretty clear, based on some of the things that have gone on during this budget season, that the administration is not interested in my approval or my partnership when it comes to this budget. And that is a, that's, that's a stance. It's not a stance I have to approve by voting yes today, and so I will not be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawyer. Councilmember Gilmar?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilwoman Sawyer's words and her steadfast advocacy uh, for this body to receive information in a timely way, to make sure that we have all the information necessary to make hard decisions. And unfortunately, that has not been the case. And there are few areas, uh, within Denver City Council that we can really say what we mean, but then also back it up by the vote. And I will be a no on this budget tonight, mainly for the fact that I've never seen, uh, a time in in official, the disrespect, the disregard, and the diversion that I have seen in this short administration's time. And the voters of Denver are very, very smart. And there's a not, there's not a lot that they can do right now, but know that they are watching and know that they are taking notes and know that the citizens of Denver, the people of Denver, no matter if you're an immigrant refugee or someone seeking safe haven, you still deserve to know what is happening within the government and where those dollars are going. And that has not been the case in my experience at all. And, um, so there is no way that I can vote, uh, for this budget. The one piece that gives me a little bit of, um, rest around it is to know that the amendments that this body made were fully accepted by the mayor. And that's something for citizens to remember, that if city council makes strong amendments and they have a supermajority, that next week, those amendments will take effect with that vote. And so that is very important because that is a power play that we have never had to use within this council before. But it was necessary to make sure that we say something about what we're seeing happen within the city budget. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilmar. Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you. Oh, I have to officially acknowledge you to the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for attending the meeting on Monday, November tenth, and the floor is yours. Thank you. I am present. Um, and thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak. Um, I will echo my colleagues in that I was very frustrated by this budget process in general, but this year in particular. Um, I've had issues with the budget process each time it has come to us and circulated a letter during my first year on council outlining my concerns. This bu- budget process, however, was not transparent. It was not collaborative in process. We learned about the cutting of programs not by the mayor, but often by, via the media or nonprofits or our own residences directly. Um, such as learning about the cuts about the magistrates, the cutting of overtime from the DMV, um, and the impacts to the youth violence programs and folks losing their funding in twenty-twenty-five. It's been very difficult to get answers. We do not have, um, in our receipt of budget actuals, so we are often shooting in the dark when it comes to budget amendments. And we have no oversight on how the mayor's office spends the unspent fund balance. I do not think the citizens of Denver are well-served by it as it exists now in charter and will be working on ways that we can address these shortcomings with Councilwoman Sawyer and Councilwoman Gilmar. Additionally, I've also been very disturbed by the fact that the city may spend down unspent fund balances without council oversight or approval with expenditures when expenditures exceed revenues. I am especially disturbed that we have spent very close to the ten percent requirement over the past few years without council oversight due to this arrangement under the charter. This year, we have a number of important things that we could have used him's unspent fund balance on, and we were not able to because of this. And we often say that budgets are moral documents, and this budget misses the mark in conveying our collective morality. I am proud of the council members as they stood together in running budget amendments um, that did reflect our principles, but it was a fraction of a fraction of what was actually needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, it has been, been clear for the ten years I've been on city council that, uh, strong mayor city budget process is a mess. Um, it, as you would expect, is very, very heavily weighted in favor of, uh, the executive arm of, of our government. Uh, city council, um, not just in Denver, but in every strong mayor city that, that I've spoken to, plays a, a figurehead role in the creation of the budget. Um, the mayor has a very talented and I believe honest and hardworking Department of Finance. It spends a year crafting the budget, uh, working with dozens of agencies and looking at their needs and figuring out how they think the budget should be allocated. Then, uh, after that year, in the middle of September, we get the budget the same day the public does. We go through a week of budget hearings, eight-hundred-page budget books, six-hundred-page budget book. I forget what the exact number was this year. And city council has no, um, Department of Finance. We, we have no, uh, trained staff, um, adequately trained to pull apart that type of a document and, and give us adequate, um, advice on where money should come from and what's the best way to move things around. I wanna salute my colleagues who did yeoman's work in that short period of time in coming up with some funding sources, but, uh, um, certainly not, the system is not set up in the best interests of the residents of Denver. Um, a few of the amendments that I voted for last week, um, I, I received a, a couple of, uh, calls that I was trying to defund the police. I'm not a defunder. What I am is a funder. I, I think the city of Denver and the state of Colorado should be mortified at the way we fund, uh, uh, education, at the way we fund children's programs in general. We need tens of millions of dollars every year in Denver alone for out-of-school time program. Um, it, it costs around two grand a month for, for, uh, private childcare for one child. Um, uh, we don't fund mental health in Denver or in the state of Colorado the way our people deserve. We don't have adequate drug treatment beds. Um, I do not believe in shooting or wounded. And so if, if we're not gonna do that, then we have no choice but to figure out a way to fund the programs that we need to fund to make our people healthy. Um, we're doing our police no favor by not funding the public health, uh, modalities that will increase public safety. We're just producing more and more people who are unprepared to have their needs met in a way other than to turn to, uh, unlawful behavior. Those are police no, no favors. I have no idea how many cops we need in Denver. We may have the exact right number today. We may have too few, or we may have too many. I'm not prepared to get in that discussion either. I'm not a public safety professional. I absolutely know that we should be embarrassed at the way we're funding our, our children's programs, uh, our mental health programs, et cetera. Um, I appreciate the difficulty in crafting the budget this year in, in the year where we faced a two-hundred-million-dollar budget. I appreciate that the mayor chose to not, uh, fight back on the ten amendments that were passed. Um, at the same time, um, my heart, out of respect for, uh, city staff, my heart wanted to vote yes on this budget, just as a yes is a thank you for the hard work you've done. Um, but it's, it's a no in that this budget fails to address what I think are the most important areas that we're not addressing yet today and to just, I've got this budget and one more in my council career. I've been making this same speech for ten years and not a damn thing's happened as far as changing that dynamic, and it must change. It absolutely must change. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I am gonna have to vote no tonight. Again, with respect for those who worked so hard to put this budget together. But, uh, you know, I don't, I have no desire, I have no knowledge on where I wanna take the money from. But I will tell the residents of Denver is my experience is people want A-plus services and wanna pay C-plus taxes. We need more money, folks. And we can't, uh, pull it out of the air. So, uh, with that, uh, as I said, I'll, I'll have to vote no on this budget.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cashman. Councilwoman Gilmar?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilwoman Cashman, for your words and all my colleagues before me. Um, I will say, um, you didn't say your, your quote, um, that you always say, and I actually have it in, in my, what I wanted to say, because I think about this every time, is when Councilman Cashman, and I know he gets it from somebody else, right? It's not your quote. Um, although you might wanna take credit since you say it, is show me your budget and that will tell me what your values are. Um, I have not been particularly pleased with this budget process. And I know, um, that the executive branch has charter authority. That has been made very clear to us, um, throughout this process and many others. But it doesn't have to be that way. Just because you have authority doesn't mean you have to pull all those levers. When you have folks who are willing to come to the table and truly collaborate, work side by side to figure this out. We've learned that the issue around, uh, our revenue is not, was not just recent discovery. It, we've been having, there's been concerns that have been expressed for years with our decreasing revenue. And so if bells, if alarms were ringing, then we should have listened and we should have started planning more accordingly. And instead, you know, we are left with these choices, these choices between, you know, who's to say, um, what kind of public safety is better over another. It's not about that necessary choice. It's also about making it comparable. We can't just be so heavily-handed on one end and not expect to try to stop the bleeding on the other end. And that is when we talk about root causes. I greatly appreciate this body and the strides that we made, um, to amend the budget. And I appreciate that the, that the mayor did accept those amendments. Um, I greatly appreciate the city staff, um, including, of course, Department of Finance, um, for the amount of work that goes into the budget. I know you all, I don't know when you sleep. I literally don't know when you sleep. Um, and especially in this difficult budget year. I know that this has been extremely challenging. And I'm hopeful as we move on, um, as we move forward from this, that we will take the steps necessary to figure out how we truly collaborate and provide transparency, not only for us, those of us sitting up here on this dais as council members, right? We ask for transparency, we ask for clarity, but for the residents of Denver, for the taxpayers, to have clarity for how our city is spending our money and how we are investing. So I greatly appreciate some of the new things that came up during this budget, um, process, like the Budget Book Club, where we were engaging actively with community members, asking them what it is that they wanted to see in their budget. And some of those things we saw come through amendments, and I thought it was absolutely beautiful that we had those direct conversations and then got to see that come through. Um, and so that's all I'm asking for is going forward, is yes, neutral respect, yes, transparency, yes, accountability, all of the, the words, right? Of, of what it is that we see, um, as we go through this city budget process. And so I, I will also be voting no this evening, um, because I did not see that process happen. But it doesn't go without all the work because this, because this budget year was extremely stressful with all of the things that we're having to deal with. I know that the staff worked incredibly hard to answer all, as many questions as they could in a short period of time. But we wouldn't have to work so hard if we were clear and transparent from the beginning. So I will be no tonight. Um, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman first?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'll be voting yes on the budget. I agree with, I do not depart from my colleagues' comments thus far and also want, um, uh, the same level of collaboration, um, and, um, just identification in the coming year. Um, but I do want to support changes that we made in council. And just wanna remind folks what some of those were because they're powerful in this budget. Um, we replenished the Immigrant Services Fund back up to its original amount. We replenished the fund that was cut in excise, um, that helps neighbors pay for their license hearing costs. Um, we got funding for a food summit so we can build the case for a bear, more robust food system. Something we're experiencing the why for right now, as we see our pantries, see their numbers double, um, of people at their doors. Um, in amendments, we replenished the Auditor's Office budget that the Worker Justice Fund funded for the first time. Um, we funded the twenty-twenty-six elections appropriately, established a three million dollars uh, for year one of the Community Led Safety Grant Pro- Program. Um, we established the funds that were cut to the out-of-school time. We have our fingerprints on this budget and I wanna support that. Um, again, I respect my colleagues who are voting no. I do not depart from their interests. Um, but I will be, uh, voting yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Watson? Your mic?
Uh, thank you so much, Council President, and, and thank you to my colleagues that spoke before me. Um, I first wanna start, uh, by saying thank you to, uh, once again, as I ended my comments last week, saying thank you to our Department of Finance team members, uh, for the work that they did. Uh, this council isn't, uh, quiet about our thoughts. Um, uh, we didn't just send you one request for updates, uh, we sent hundreds. And you and your teams, um, responded. And you responded to the best of your ability to provide accurate, um, input on each of the questions I know that my office asked, and I know for the budget hearings that I facilitated on all of the questions within those budget hearings. To each of the department leads, um, the, the executive directors and the leaders within each of our departments, our budgets aren't only a decision elevated by, uh, Stephanie and Wizards at the Department of Finance. It is the collaborative work from executive directors and their staff throughout each of the departments. And this year, more than most, um, those executive directors, those supervisors, were not only looking at a budget in a zero percent growth year, in a year that we knew from last year that we were gonna be seeing less, um, revenues compared to expenses. Um, they were speaking to their employees, city employees, who, some for ten, fifteen years, some for six to eight months, and then being in these roles, who have devoted themselves as servants of this city. They were having discussions with some of those folks to let them know that their career with the City County of Denver were ending. Those are difficult discussions, while still looking forward to seeing how we can balance a budget, which is required of us, um, for twenty-twenty-six. So I thank each of the folks within each of the departments for your good work. My yes tonight on this budget is because of your work. It's because of the work of the Department of Finance, and it's because of the work of this council. With nine-point-eight million dollars approximately of additional amendments and funding to all the priorities that Councilmember Torres listed off. Each of those were hot fought, many of those were unanimous. Those were decisions made about our future, where our priorities are at as far as when we fund this government. Um, I am proud of my yes votes on those amendments. What to do about a budget within a system, within the city, um, that we budget on an annual basis, and we're seeing headwinds, not just this year, and I'll- annual basis, and we're seeing headwinds, not just this year, and I'll put it on a timestamp, someone stamp it, we will have zero percent growth next year, we'll begin with a budget with a revenue or, 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 or reserves close to 10%. This is the closest we've gotten to 10% reserves in history, as far as I can remember, and as far as, um, the Department of Finance has provided. We will be having this discussion again next year. We will be making tough decisions again next year. And my encouragement to my friends in Department of Finance, the administration, and our fellow council members, we don't have to wait, um, to begin looking at really what those impacts would be before, um, we start having dialogues. I began having discussions with Department of Finance beginning in April. My office is when we looked at rescission, when we looked at supplemental funding for projects and programs that I believed in strongly, I knew from looking at the, the readjusted or the finalized budget at that time, that we're going to be facing some tough decisions this fall. Um, so I renew my support and focus on ensuring that we do our job as city council members, that we fight for the funds for our communities, we work collaboratively with the administration. I'm grateful that the administration did not veto any of the amendments passed last week. But it's our responsibility in this process, it's not a collaboration per se, it's a requirement by charter, that we have a balanced budget and that we work within the construct of the process that we have. I look forward to continuing leaning in, in this process and ensuring that in these tough times and the 2027 budget, I expect to be just as difficult, if not more, because there are no vacancy savings that will be remaining. We're at contingency and spent, we're going to have, uh, a collective bargaining agreement that's going to cut back on some of that for sheriff. We're going to be looking at contingency for all of the bargaining units coming forward from Denver, um, all of the, the departments within the City and County of Denver that can collectively bargain. This is going to be difficult. Um, but I think we have the right folks on this dais, and we have partners within the City and County of Denver to make sure this is right. So thank you, Madam President, I'll be voting yes, uh, tonight on the budget for all of those reasons.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campbell. Thank you, Madam President. Um, I've been thinking about what I want to say about the budget in this year. I don't think that, uh, it's a small phrase to say, you know, this has been a lot. Um, but I'll keep my comments brief, uh, but it has been quite a year and, like, there have been so many challenges to navigate. Um, we've had softening revenues, um, where have we had layoffs, we've had a number of departments, there've been a lot of things that have been going on in the city. And I also think context matters, and with the backdrop of our federal government, um, that has been chaotic and absurd with its policies and so much inaction, um, I think everyone is guessing what's next, kind of holding their breath, what's next? Um, and that makes some of our planning forward challenging. Um, but I do really want to thank my colleagues for the discussion and the discourse and for bringing so many amendments forward that really, I think, left us in a place of we needed to talk about where we are in the budget, we needed to discuss things, we had, you know, ideas brought forward, and I do believe that we are stronger together. Um, so in this coming year, I look forward to working with everyone, um, so that we can address items in the budget before it comes to us, um, as Councilman McCaslin said in, you know, when the public receives it as well. So I think that there is a ton of room for collaboration and thinking about this together and working on it together. I am voting for things in this budget, because I think there were some things that got lifted and moved forward, um, the independent agencies for the auditor, for the clerk and recorder. Um, I'm voting for, you know, the reinstatement for those public magistrates, um, for having that food summit, um, also thinking about out of school time, so needed and so much more is needed, as, um, was stated. But really, thank you to the, um, city staff. I know Department of Finance, you guys have been working, you know, burning it on both ends and still, um, and still burning it on both ends, um, for, you know, what is past and what, what we're working on in the future. Um, so I am really, um, appreciative of the amendments that did pass, and I'm appreciative of the mayor for, um, accepting all of those amendments. And I feel like in good faith, then, um, I will be voting yes on the budget tonight. Uh, but I think I agree with my, um, council colleagues that it can't go, it can't be like this next year. We are definitely going to have to do it, I think, differently, I think collaboratively, um, transparently, uh, and we, as a council body, I think have strength in being able to communicate what those things are, um, in the coming months, so that we do get, um, a budget that is, um, more aligned, uh, with what our, and actually, I will say, a lot of our council priorities were met within this budget, and so, um, I just look forward to, um, moving on and getting this together and figuring out, but I'll be yes on this budget tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, budgeting is a lot of fun in good times. It's a lot of fun when the economy is great, and it's not so much fun in times like this. Those of us up here, there are three of us up here on our third terms, and I think we can remember when we had fund balances well over $300 million, well over 20, 25, I think 25% or more, 24, 25% of, of the, the general fund, and our target is 15%. And so fat and happy is a, is a term we sometimes hear when times are good. And when times are bad, there can be a lot of finger pointing. I'm going to vote yes on the budget for much of the same reasons that Councilman Torres first enunciated. I believe that if we want collaboration, that we should collaborate. And it doesn't depend on the other person, the other side necessarily going first, I think we should go first. I, uh, I'm looking at the Schedule 100s for the entire time that I've been up here, and two of us, uh, two other members have been up here, and the 2016 budget was our first, and revenues went up every year. And again, as I mentioned, 24% fund balance, boy, were those great years, and we put some of it to use. But when COVID hit, believe it or not, the 2020 year was a lot worse than this one. We had to rescind, well, we didn't actually rescind, but we held back appropriations of about $130 million. It wasn't just 50 million that we did for this year, it was 100 and about 125 or something like that. That was, that was tough, and we had furloughs, and we had a hiring freeze, I don't remember, we had layoffs, I didn't, did we have some layoffs? No, we didn't. Okay. Um, and so that, that is really hard, but you know what happened in 2021? The projections that our finance department offered were very conservative, which we always appreciate, and we started to recover more than we thought we would. And the fund balance came back, so for, in 2021, we actually had higher revenues, and we, our fund balance went up to $306 million. The year after COVID, in 2022, revenues were up again, and we fed into fund balance, and we used a little bit of it under Mayor Hancock. 2023 budget, revenues up again, and, uh, the beginning fund balance was $390 million. Wow. Then we hit worldwide inflation coming out of COVID, and I just want to remind folks that we're not the only city doing this. Major cities across the country right now are doing the same thing we're doing, they're having very difficult conversations and arguments and, and finger pointing. And I don't know what you can do about a global pandemic and coming out of it with pent-up demand and global inflation up to 9%. You know, the United States economy actually recovered better than most other countries around the world after COVID. But now we've had inflation, and we've had some, some craziness in the economy, especially this past year, that's causing people to pull back. So in 2024, we didn't meet our revenue projections. And this year, we're doing even, we're doing even worse, we're going to be flat, and only a slight increase next year in revenues. Against that backdrop, I think in the spirit of collaboration, we need to, uh, we need to be the collaborators that we wish the other, we wish the third floor were. Uh, when I was over in Ireland in St. Patrick's Cathedral in Dublin, they had a door there from, uh, uh, the, the Middle Ages, when the clans were fighting in Ireland, and there's a hole in the door. And when the attacking clan was besieging the castle there, the attackers wanted to make peace and they wanted to collaborate. And it's called the door, I think it's called the door of reconciliation. And the attacker, the, the leader of that clan stuck his arm through that opening, expecting that those inside defending the castle would chop it off. And they didn't. They took that hand and they shook it. And I think this is one of those moments where we just have to work together. I agree with Councilmember Torres and the other members who are voting yes and saying that when you have the administration accepting all dozen, uh, 10, 12, how many were there? 10 amendments that were passed, and yet most of them had super majority. Uh, I think in, uh, in response, the only appropriate vote for me is to vote aye on the budget. Absolutely will. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I really appreciate all of my colleagues' comments today. Um, and I want to start by acknowledging all my staff's work, everyone's staff's work, everyone working hard on this budget. We've been going crazy, working late nights and all weekend, looking at numbers and trying to figure things out, um, and trying, and I know the administration has been working on getting us answers to things. Um, and I also want to be clear about another thing, which is, this demonstrates that we can work together. But equally clear is that collabora, collaboration requires trust, requires transparency and respect for the role of this body. And this year's process revealed issues that we cannot simply move past without naming them. I want to address some comments that were made publicly that suggest that council use of contingency funds makes, uh, the administration nervous, um, when they have drawn down on contingency the entire time they've been in office. Uh, we did this not for fun, but to support independent agencies like the clerk and the auditor, and that is not reckless, it's responsible. We shouldn't have to be the mediator between agencies that can't communicate and come to agreements on their own, and I hope that we, in the future, we won't have to. I was also extremely disappointed to see the outreach to registered neighborhood organizations, asking them to oppose my colleagues' budget amendments, um, and saying that they're defunding the police when the recruitment budget went from $3 million to $9 million, and I can't tell you why. So that is a fact, and I still don't have a clear answer as to why, if we're having the same number of recruit classes, are we expecting it to triple? Um, I also think that, I'm really glad that there's engagement with the neighborhoods, but I wish it would have happened when we're creating a budget, not when people are trying to have ideas about how to make the budget better. And throughout this whole crazy process, we found out that the Denver Post was not paying rent, a building that a lot of us didn't support purchasing, and that is still behind on rent, and is $3 million behind on rent. That $3 million could fund the clerk's budget shortfall, actually, um, and then we wouldn't have to be worried about our elections. But collaboration is not the same as silence. I'm not going to silence, but I am hoping to turn a new leaf and be collaborative. Those are the reasons why I will be voting no on this budget, but it's not closing a door, it's an invitation to do better, and we have to start doing better before I can get to a yes on things. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Hank?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I'm happy that this fund, or, excuse me, I'm happy that this budget funds our independent agencies, including the clerk and recorder, uh, thank you clerk for being here in the chambers with us, uh, and the auditor. I'm also sad that this happened because, uh, only because of a budget amendment, uh, that happened through council action. Um, in, in the future, I hope the mayor's proposed budget fully funds these independent agencies from the start, so that we don't have to add it through council, the council process. Independent agencies should never have to depend on council amendments to do their independent work. I also hope that in future years, we can work better together, the executive and legislative branches, so that this process is smoother for everyone. The people of Denver deserve a budget process that feels like teamwork, not tension. So I want to thank the, uh, the mayor for accepting our budget amendments, um, in the spirit of teamwork. Um, I hope we see more transparency and visibility how the budget is developed and adjusted, especially when city staff recognize that facing increased economic uncertainty. It's concerning that staff noticed this uncertainty back in 2023, but didn't share that with council until 2025, actually, just the last few weeks. Uh, I also hope that when decisions are made about services or contracts, we hear about them directly from the administration, not from frustrated constituents who discover that resources they rely on were no longer available. We shouldn't have to learn about these changes secondhand. Uh, council shouldn't find out about services, uh, service cuts for many angry emails, we should hear it directly from the executive branch. And finally, I hope that, uh, when either branch of government asks for collaboration, that the request is met in good faith. Um, I believe that elected leaders should make decisions based on our values, and I want to thank my colleagues, uh, for clearly articulating, uh, their values tonight through their comments and, uh, their votes. Uh, words matter. Um, I want to thank Council President for the words she chose in our letters, uh, to the cabalize statements. I agree with my colleagues, we need more transparency. Uh, and I want to be transparent and direct. I'll be supporting this budget tonight, uh, but if we don't see the transparency this council, council, and this city deserves, I'll be a no vote next year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide some clarity, as it might, might have seemed as though council members who choose to vote no, that that means that the amendments that were accepted by the mayor's office would then be a loss. Um, and I was one of the council members who, um, ran a number of amendments, um, so that's not true. And just to provide some clarity, council members can both hold ownership of the incredible amendments, uh, that were proposed while also rejecting the budget as a whole, and that's pursuant to Section 717 of the Charter. And so whether we vote yes on this budget or whether we vote no on the budget, the budget will still be implemented, and so nothing gets lost, uh, when it comes to the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for that clarity. Um, so this vote did not come easily for me this evening. Um, I left town last Tuesday and did some, went to one of my favorite things to study land use, for those who know me, know that land use fills my soul. Um, and I was thinking about why. I was like, why do I love land use? And it's because it's clear, you can build to a certain height, you have the bulk plane, you have your side, side setbacks, you have your use table, and it's predictable. And that is something that I like as a Latina in my life, because a lot of times we didn't have predictability as people of color. Um, I will say that I had a hard time with this budget, and it did not feel predictable. Um, it didn't feel like something I could easily go into and read and understand. Um, and I think that's why I always love my, my army side, being a county commissioner, is I feel like I can lean on that aspect of the work that I do. Um, every decision that we have made has weighed heavily because it impacts you, the people who are sitting in these pews. Really, it does. It impacts the kids, and oftentimes, I grew up, um, my grandpa, for those who may not know, his name was Haranimo Sandwal, a Native American, and I grew up thinking and talking about the next seven generations. It's the seven generations that got me here, and it's the seven generations that are after me. And that's why this budget weighs so heavily on me this evening. I'm proud of the amendments that city council put forward, which strengthen accountability, and in my personal opinion, reflect our community priorities. And I'll just say I'm disappointed for the ones that didn't pass, and it was And it was a really hard budget, and those votes weighed heavily on me as well. And I really do believe City Council has risen to the occasion and tonight are delivering a stronger budget that reflects our community, your community, the people in these pews, the people watching online, the people who voted this past Tuesday, the amazing residents of Denver. I look forward, as Council President, charting a new path forward for my colleagues on the budget that has more transparency. We've heard this word called collaboration a lot from tonight, and a clearer process for budget, future budget cycles. And after careful consideration, I will be voting yes on the mayor's 2026 budget. And just as a reminder, the budget, even if it, tonight, after I say all of the ayes and nays, if it fails, it goes, it is enacted. And what happens, just so you all are familiar, because not everyone speaks bureaucratic long bill inflex con, I happen to have like a degree in it after 13 years, it feels like. The long bill will come next week. So this vote is more ceremonial. It's a vote of people's values. And I just want all my colleagues up here to know, I value every single one of you. And I value your input and I value your thoughts. So thank you. And next week is the long bill. And that's the bill that actually appropriates everything for 2026. So next week's vote is not ceremonial. It's actually the vote of the budget. And we'll have to look through it, and it's like literally the long bill. So it's like the 2026 budget. So as much as we'd all like to be done tonight, we're not. We have one more vote next week. And just want to say thank you to the residents of Denver for holding every single one of us accountable and holding the mayor accountable. And with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call on the motion to adopt the mayor's proposed 2026 budget.
Councilmembers Torres?
Aye.
Alvedez?
Nay.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Or excuse me, nay. Gonzo's Cauteris?
No.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Nay.
Lewis?
Nay.
Ramiro Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
No.
Torres? Sorry. Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandwal?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, could the voting now be resolved? Six ayes, six nays. Six ayes, six nays, the mayor's proposed 2026 budget has been adopted. Approval of the minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes of November 3rd? Yes. Oh, does it fail? Sorry, 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 sorry. Let me go back, six ayes, six nays, the mayor's 2026 proposed budget fails. I don't know, is it fail? How do I say that? Has not been adopted? What do I say, Luke? Has not been adopted? Okay. So six ayes, six nays, the mayor's 2026 budget has not been adopted. Sorry about that. Approval of the minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes of November 3rd? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements? Are there any announcements this afternoon? Councilmember Watson?
Council President, I'll be quick. One quick announcement, this is a opportunity for kind of a personal statement here. This weekend, many same-gendered couples, including my husband and I, who've been married for 21 years, went home with the thought process that the Supreme Court was going to vote on whether our marriages are equal, whether they matter to this country federally. The very specific legal theory that they were looking at is whether religious organizations or individuals have the right to say no to our marriages. The person who put this forward is going on their fifth marriage. My husband and I are on our first. And I expect it to be our only. I say this from this dais because I think it matters. For the many years that I have been an adult, there have been election after election after election where my community continues to have to fight, where my, where same-gendered couples, same-gendered community members continue to have to fight to prove that their lives and their loves matter. Imagine for yourselves, if tonight, you went home and some clerk or someone else in this country was able to move to the Supreme Court a decision of whether your marriage matters or not. Whether your social security benefits can be transferred in your death to the person you love. These are not things that are easily forgotten. There is no celebration in my household that, once again, we are having this discussion. So I say to those, especially those who are on their fourth or fifth marriage, I encourage you to strongly focus on your own home, your own family, and leave our families out of your business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvedez. Well said, Councilwoman Watson. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate the Broadway Merchants and Broadway for passing the General Improvement District on election night. Very excited for the future of Broadway. And shout out to Jane Gillis, who helps us, who's here in the audience today. Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Hines.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to recognize, visit Denver, it's having its annual board meeting on Wednesday morning at 7:30. It is the marketing arm for the, technically, the city of Denver, but it moves its influences so far beyond just the city of Denver. The, the reach is, is all throughout Colorado. I also want to lift up INC.'s annual meeting. INC. is the Inter-Neighborhood Cooperation Organizations, the registered neighborhood organization that is of other registered neighborhood organizations. That is a Wednesday night at 6:30 at, at the Art Hotel. And on Friday, Golden Triangle Creative District and the Clifford Still Museum are having an art poster launch party at the Clifford Still. That is at Friday between 5:00 and 7:00. So if you are interested in learning more about the Golden Triangle Creative District or the Clifford Still Museum and get a poster that is co-authored by both organizations, please stop by the Clifford Still Museum between 5:00 and 7:00 on Friday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Lees. Hi, thank you. I have a few announcements. The first one is the joint RNO meeting, which will be taking place on November 15th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Mosaic Campus, our community campus in the Colorado Room. This is all of the RNO leaders have come together to put together a joint RNO meeting with all of the RNOs in District 8. The second announcement I have is the 42nd Annual Ohio Wathla Davis Junior Luncheon. So the date is taking place on Saturday, December 13th. And so note that change, it's happening on a Saturday instead of a Friday. December 13th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And we still do have a few tickets available, and you can find those on our link tree or by reaching out to the office directly. I wanted to also thank Councilwoman Sawyer, as well as Councilwoman Gilmore, with their Budget Better Denver meeting that happened on November 5th. It was a great dialogue for us to start to think about where we might be able to make some changes in the budget. And then finally, I wanted to say hooray for passing the bond. And I wanted to encourage the mayor, if he hasn't already, to figure out ways to maximize local participation from contractors and consultants for all stages and all projects within the voter-approved vibrant bond. I would love to see the mayor explore ways in which we can commit to our local businesses and infuse those bond dollars into our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good call on the bond, inspiring our local economy kind of dreamer. There are no presentations, there are no communications. There is one proclamation being read this afternoon. Councilmember Watson and Alvedez, can you please read Proclamation 1853?
Thank you, Council President. Proclamation number 251853. A proclamation honoring Mile High Veterans and Leadership Veteran for Veterans Day 2025. Whereas Veterans Day originated as Amistice Day, first proclaimed by President Woodrow Wilson in 1919 to commemorate the end of World War I on November 11th, 1918, a moment that symbolized hope for peace, unity, and healing. And whereas in 1954, following the service of American troops in World War II and Korean War, Congress designated a day as Veterans Day to honor all United States veterans, past and present, who have served with courage, discipline, and unwavering loyalty to our nation. And whereas, a Veterans Day stands as a solemn reminder of the sacrifices made by the men and women of the armed forces and a celebration of veterans who continue to strengthen our communities through their leadership, mentorship, and civic engagement. And whereas, our responsibility to veterans does not end when service concludes, but continues in ensuring access to opportunity, community, and belonging. And whereas, today we honor two veteran-serving organizations, Mile High Veterans and Leadership Veteran for their commitment to supporting veterans and their families in Denver and across Colorado. And whereas, Mile High Veterans has long served as a cornerstone of veteran advocacy in the Denver metropolitan area, furthering the patriotic, historical, educational, and community interest of veterans and their families. And whereas, the organization focuses on education, community empowerment, and civil rights, providing veterans with resources to secure armed benefits and supporting their transition into civilian life and dignity and confidence. And?
Whereas, Mile High Veterans uplifts Hispanic and BIPOC veterans, families, youth, and elders through scholarship programs, outreach, and culturally rooted support systems, working to ensure representation, belonging, and equitable access to services. And whereas, Leadership Veteran has distinguished itself by uniting veteran-serving organizations to expand their capacity, strengthen organizational sustainability, and increase their impact on veterans and families throughout Colorado. And whereas, recognizing that many veteran-serving organizations operate with limited resources and in isolation, Leadership Veteran bridges these gaps through an eight-month leadership accelerator that builds organizational resilience, strengthens board governance and fundraising practices, and prepares nonprofit leaders to better serve veterans and their families. And whereas, together, Mile High Veterans and Leadership Veteran exemplify what it means to serve not only in uniform, but through continued commitment to uplifting others, strengthening families, and building community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, that Denver City Council does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in the city and county of Denver, and encourages all residents to honor our veterans, not only in words, but through acts of care, advocacy, and partnership to ensure that every veteran is seen, valued, and supported. And Section 2, that the Clerk and Recorder of the city and county of Denver shall fix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and that a copy be transmitted to Michael Mitchell, Commander Kenny Mesa, and Gina Gallegos. Thank you, Councilmembers. Your motion to adopt? I move that Proclamation 251853 be adopted. It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Alvedez or Watson, who'd like to go first? I can start. Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank the organizations for being here today. I was extremely inspired this year by Leadership Veteran doing some work to honor and tell the story of Hector Flores Park in the Baker neighborhood. I really learned a story that I carry in my heart. And it was so ironic because I went to this celebration and it was family members that I've known since high school that were there, people that I grew up with from the West Side, that had a fallen person from the military that died in police custody. And that was a very interesting and hard thing to learn. But I was also so proud that that park was in my district and it so fits within the Baker story of resilience and hardship and fighting for our country and our values. And I also want to honor Mile High Veterans, who are very special to me. I was able to join last year, even I haven't been able to make it back. But one of the reasons why I first learned about Mile High Veterans is actually because one of my best friends, Katrina Damian, may she rest in peace. And I went to a Bronco game and she took me there. And I never felt more welcomed or a place that felt like home to spend that time. And that day is extremely special to me because it's the last time I've gone to. And it's harder for me to even talk about going to a game when one of my best friends was just such a pillar in our community and was there with me that day. And it's a very special memory that I have. But not only did I walk in, I also saw Ramon Toya there, who's a friend of mine who also passed away. So two of my best friends that have passed away in my life were very connected to this organization. And so to me, the quality of people and the commitment and how, every time I've been there, they're thinking about how can we help the community? What scholarships are we going to do? I have participated in the Inchiata Open, which is the funnest golf tournament that there is. And so I'm just really honored to recognize both of these organizations just for the way they've touched my life recently. And I'm not even a veteran. I do have veterans in my family. And I know a lot of veterans, I went to West High School, and that went to Iraq. And they're not the same. And I think about them all the time when we're making legislative decisions and how we have turned our back often on the people who have fought for this country. So thank you both for all you do to finish telling those stories. Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank very much Mile High Veterans and Leadership Veterans for the work that you do in community and always ensuring that our veterans and our communities are working together to ensure that we are, we're, we're elevating not just your stories, but the stories that everyone who put the, the, the uniform on. I want to share, I grew up in a military family. I think I've had family members that served from World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, and Desert Storm. And they served with honor, so much as some of your families have done the same. They served with honor during a time when our country at times didn't value their patriotism or their service. Yet they stood up. Yet they came back and they fought. Because this country is ours. Not because someone settled it, but because we helped to build it and we helped to defend it. And it is the veterans and it's the good work that each of you do on a regular basis. I was honored to be at the Veterans Day Parade with Councilmember Alvedez and Councilmember, Council President Pretem Ramiro Campbell this weekend. And my heart went out to the JRTC folks from all the high schools, from north to east and to all the others that showed up, turning toward those traditions and those with their families from such a young age. I also want to elevate, I think this week, and Department of Parks and Rec can correct me, but I think that Joseph P. Martinez's heart is finally opening. And for many folks who may not be aware, Joseph P. Martinez received the Medal of Freedom and Courage.
It was, it was a hot year.
Yes. So he received, he was one of the first in the city and county of Denver, I think the state of Colorado, to receive that Purple Heart, that Medal of Courage and Freedom. And we had a little D K Park with not much, um, um, things to identify and to weigh out how important he is to this community. And I want to thank you all, as well as Denver Park Trust and Denver Parks and Rec for really coming together to make sure we elevate him, the good work that he has done and his family has done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Just want to give a shout out to all the veterans who are here with us. My uncle's a veteran. And he served in Vietnam. And I just so happen to be in a program at UC Denver in the Executive Masters of Business Administration right now. And out of 34 of us, more than three force are veterans. And in my study group, there's five of us, three of them are veterans. And so I've gotten to get to know intimately, especially people my age, of what they experienced in Iraq. Some of the pettiness that they still have. We have our meetings, our class session that'll actually be this Saturday downtown. And sometimes when sirens go off or loud noises go off, I can see that the room is impacted in a different way. And so it's just... And so it's just how we have a different type of appreciation. I've always had an appreciation, but getting to know someone who's my age more, I always thought of them as my, like my uncle, who was eighty, and they're not, they're just amongst us. And they really do have an honor, and I think it is today or tomorrow is the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the Marine Corps. And so just want to give a shout out to all of our Marine Corps vets out there. I have several good friends who are Marines and are veterans, so just want to give a shout out to the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of our Marine Corps as well. You just play a special role in the United States for us, so thank you so much. Madam Secretary, you will call?
Whoop his motherfucking ass, right in the middle of the fucking class.
Councilmembers Torres?
Aye.
Albedrez?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Consales Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Ramirez Campbell?
Aye.
Watson? Madam President Zambal?
Aye.
I'm Secretary, close the button, announce the results.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes proclamation eighteen fifty-three has been adopted. We now have time for the acceptance, proclamation acceptance, councilmember Watson, and the veterans, who would you like to invite to accept their proclamation?
I wanted to take one quick moment and just acknowledge that Clerk came here for this because he's gonna put on the seal, so if you could join us afterwards for a photo. But I wanted to invite Michael Mitchell and Commander Kenny Masis and Dina Gallegos to say a few words.
I got another proclamation after this. Wait, they're Stella U.
Hello, City Council. My name is Kenny Masis, and I'm a Marine Corporal. I did two tours in Vietnam. I'm the commander of Mile High Veterans Organization. On my left is my adjutant, Harold Armenta, a warrant officer. On my right is Navy Captain Dina Gallegos.
Oh, that's Gallegos.
Dina is the Chair of our Veterans Division. I want to thank the city council, the council, every city and county council in particular, who's flown out of there, is for recognizing our organization and proclaiming us in our works in this organization, the great city of Denver, believe me. I'm a native here, and I got a lot of friends in this city. And you mentioned your family this time, Paul, I grew up with the family. I remember your grandparents, your father, your uncles. I remember your grandma cooking great breakfast for me and Joey, you know?
The Latinos out here, they know each other.
That's why I recognize your family as well, I appreciate that. Without the members that are with me today, I cannot be in the position I am now to accept this proclamation. I'm very grateful, okay? We will continue our work in our organization, and we are a Hispanic, mainly an Hispanic organization, although we invite all, everyone.
Hispanics is in a race. They opted out to be in a race.
We're based on seventeen seventy-seven.
In the nineteen thirties.
And we're centrally located, so please stop by and visit us as a guest, you're always welcome as a guest.
The Latina said, the Negroes problem is the Negroes' problem. So, the Hispanic problem is Hispanics' problem.
I'd just like to say thank you, he said it all.
My name is Michael Mitchell, I'm the founder and board chair of Leadership Veteran. This, this program came to be based on my experience fundraising for V F W plus one, the first and many, funded in eighteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, those kinds of man.
The goal is to bring the veteran nonprofit serving community together through nonprofit management education, collaboration, and access to funders. I'm proudly say, as of this, this moment, fifty-five organizations have gone through the program over the last four years. Over half a million dollars have been raised through the program by these nonprofits, so they can better serve our veterans. And when we were planning this program in twenty twenty-one, when we went live with the first cohort in twenty-two, I wanted a really sharp color guard to kick us off, right, and to close the first cohort. And I was so fortunate to have the best color guard in the state, Mile High Veterans Color Guard. And this current cohort, Deanna, is a member. So for me to be here, for me to be here with Mile High means a lot to me. We look forward to continue to serve veteran community, and thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
I got another proclamation after this.
Madam Secretary, please begin for introduction. From the Community Planning and Housing Committee, twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-five, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification of thirty-three thirty-three West Regis Boulevard and fifty fifty-one dash fifty-one fifteen North Federal Boulevard in Regis. Twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-six, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for West thirty-three thirty-three Regis Boulevard in Regis. From the Finance and Business Committee, twenty-five dash fifteen sixty-seven, a bill for an ordinance adding a new section establishing the maximum possible civil penalty for violations of Article Eight of Chapter Twenty-Seven of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. Twenty-five dash fifteen eighty-eight, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget for the West Colfax Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen eighty-nine, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Santa Fe Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget for the Rhino Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-one, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Old South Gaylord Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-two, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Five Points Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-three, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Federal Boulevard Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-four, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget for the Denver, for the Downtown Denver Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-five, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Colfax Mayfair Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-six, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget for the Colfax Business Improvement District.
I still look younger than all them motherfuckers.
Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-seven, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Cherry Creek Silveryia Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-eight, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget for the Cherry Creek North Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash fifteen ninety-nine, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six operating plan and budget and amending the twenty-twenty-five budget for the Denver Business Improvement District. Twenty-five dash sixteen oh five, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-six annual plan and operating budget for the Denver Downtown District. Twenty-five dash sixteen oh six, the bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number four hundred, series of two thousand eight, and subsequently amended by ordinance number sixteen fifty-nine, series of twenty twenty-four, ordinance number twelve oh eight, series of twenty twenty-five, ordinance number twelve seventy-nine, series of twenty twenty-five, and ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five, thereby amending the boundaries of the Denver Downtown Development Authority. And from the South Quad River, twenty-five dash fifteen seventy-eight, a bill for an ordinance approving and accepting the Denver Downtown, the Downtown Denver Area Plan, which shall become part of Comprehensive Plan twenty forty-four of the city and county of Denver pursuant to the provisions of section twelve dash sixty-one of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will do a recap. Under resolutions, Councilmember Albedrez has called out Council Resolution fifteen eighty for postponing, Councilmember Watson has called out Council Resolution thirteen seventy-two for questions, Councilmember Lewis has called out thirteen seventy-two for a vote, Councilmember Gilmore has called out Council Resolution sixteen eighty-eight for comments, Councilmember Lewis has called out Council Resolutions fourteen eighty-eight and eighteen forty-two for comments, and Resolution fifteen sixty-five for questions. Under bills for introduction, Councilmember Hines has called out Council Resolution, Council Bill fifteen seventy-eight for amendments, and Councilmember Lewis has called out Council Bills fifteen ninety, fifteen ninety-four, and fifteen ninety-six for a vote under bills for final consideration.
Yeah, General Public Commerce says start in like ten minutes.
Under pending, items have been called out. Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens, Council Resolution fifteen eighty, a resolution approving a proposed agreement between the community firm, T C F, to provide free edition legal services to approximately three thousand ninety-nine unduplicated households annually. Councilmember Albedrez, what would you like to do with Council Resolution fifteen eighty? If pursuant to Rule three point six of the Charter, I would like to postpone consideration of this resolution for one week to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, November seventeenth. Thank you, no motion, motion is required. Council Resolution fifteen eighty has been postponed until the next council meeting. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens, Council Resolution sixteen eighty, a resolution approving a proposed contract between the city and county of Denver and E C I site construction management to construct a new thirteen point two acre park in Denver's Gateway Neighborhood. Councilmember Gilmore, please go ahead with your comments on Council Resolution sixteen eighty.
I wanted to call this one out because it has taken decades in the far northeast, specifically Green Valley Ranch, to, and the neighbor that has been built out, the neighborhood that has been built out there has been out there for about fifteen years. And I'm pretty sure that when they bought their homes out there, they were told that there was a planned park that would be catty cornered to their development, and knowing that it's taken years to get this built, and that the city and county of Denver has owned the land for twenty-five years. And so if you look at it from that scope, when people bought their home and their kids might have been small, thinking that someday they might be able to take them over and walk them to a community park, they grew up without any park ever being built, and this park is part of the rise bond, and it's a thirteen acre park on a nineteen acre site, and we're very, very grateful in the far northeast for the little bit over seven million dollars that's going to be allocated to build out the park. But from the standpoint of equity and what we saw with the bond and what we've seen with the budget, without a strong equity lens, communities of color, specifically Green Valley Ranch and Montbello, get left behind, and it's strategic. And without a difference in how investments are made, we're going to continue seeing, especially in the far northeast, an elevated timeframe for us to realize amenities that are promised to residents. And so I wanted to bring this forward and make those comments.
I didn't know you was creeping.
Thank you. I'm sorry, just refreshing the script.
So please don't stop biting me.
Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens, Resolution thirteen seventy-two, a resolution approving a proposed third mandatory agreement between the city and county of Denver and the Salvation Army to operate and provide programmatic services at Crossroads, a twenty-four seven low barrier emergency shelter in Council District Nine. Councilmember Watson, please go ahead with your questions on Resolution thirteen seventy-two.
That's a she.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Is there anyone from Salvation Army that's here or from the administration?
They're online. Tim, I think his name is Jeff.
She's married to a, she's married to a black niece, dude. Name Scott Gilmore, he used to be the head of.
Can I turn on the sound, Jeff, because let's keep it close, are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, Jeff, I can, I can hear. Madam President, I'm out.
Yes, go ahead.
Jeff, I call this out for your team and order team from Salvation Army to talk through their security plan for Crossroads. We've had a few discussions outside of this, this, the chambers here, and I asked for some specific information on the internal security plan and the external security plan. Do you mind kind of elaborating on what that plan is for Crossroads, so that my colleagues are aware of those?
That's a woman.
First of all, I want to apologize for not being able to join in person, I had a family commitment that made that impossible. I'm happy to talk about the security at Crossroads. So as far as the external security of the site, the Salvation Army, along with all of our shelter providers, are required to monitor the perimeter of the building and to contact three one one or nine one one in the event that there are issues on the exterior of the site. And as far as the internal security goes, they take a wide variety of measures, including checking people into the site, ensuring that all guests sign an agreement and make them aware of their responsibilities both inside and outside of the sites, and that is in the process of being revised by Salvation Army, just to ensure that there is clarity around the expectations of the guests from being good neighbors of the site. And they're also in the process of putting up signage on the inside of the site, just to remind guests of their responsibilities to be good neighbors.
She lost one of her nephews to game violence.
As you know, have been meeting with neighbors in the surrounding community to talk about what else can be done in terms of addressing security issues, some of them perhaps related to guests of Crossroads, others as to members in the community are unhoused neighbors who may or may not be staying there.
That's my term. Y'all hear that shit? This motherfucker just fuels my motherfucking term.
Police Department, as well as with our nonprofit partners that are providing outreach work in the area.
Jeff, come on.
Thank you, Jeff, and to my colleagues, I wanted to also share to add to Jeff's discussion, we've begun discussions with nonprofit service providers that are providing support for communities that are unhoused. We've provided a, begin to have discussions with Salvation Army on their outdoor security, as well as some of the developments, the denar market development that's occurring around Crossroads, to come together to create a good neighbor agreement process, a good neighbor agreement committee, to determine very specific steps that they're going to take, not just for the perimeter of the Salvation Army, but all of the facilities of public services that are found in that.
As far as I know, she's a grandma.
Those are my questions, Jeff, thank you so much for being on, and Madam President, I have no other comments to make.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore, please put Council Resolution thirteen seventy-two on the floor for adoption. I called this one out. Yeah, that's why you're putting it on the floor for adoption, because you called it out for a vote and comment as well. Yeah, so I'll put it on the floor for adoption, and then I'll go through the queue.
Yeah, twin, this shit is wild. Start a free show.
I know the Council Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen seventy-two.
Still got the L G B T Q flag on my desk.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded, comments by members of council, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. So I'm a no tonight on this item, and I've made it very clear that I'm no confident in the Salvation Army's ability to run our shelters, and they have proven that time and time again. That said, I am more than happy to continue to let them operate in their strengths and in their masteries as a provider, as they have expressed to me, and that's why I am not calling off the other Salvation Army item that is before us.
All their shelters are trash, especially Crossroads.
Secretary will call on Council Resolution thirteen seventy-two. Councilmembers Torres? Albedrez?
Aye.
Aye.
Boo.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Boo.
Consales Gutierrez?
Aye.
Oh, yay.
Hines?
Aye.
Consulate Councilor Pita? Thank you. Lewis? Aye. Ramirez Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Zambal?
Aye.
I'm Secretary, close the button and announce the results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes, Council Resolution thirteen seventy-two has passed. Tonight, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill fourteen forty-five to change the classification of the West Regis Boulevard.
They're going here, Laura, cape before the illegals. Where are the illegals supposed to go? Back to their fucking homeland.
... general public conversation to hear from the public on city matters. Except for any matter that is scheduled for a local required public hearing.
People signed up to speak.
The general public conversation will begin at five P M.
I'm hoping a bunch of people don't show up.
Tonight's session is being interpreted in Spanish. Sam or Jasmine, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Of course. Thank you for asking. Hello everyone. My name is Sam Guzman with the C O C. Joining me virtually through Zoom, along with my colleague Jasmine, will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. Please allow me a quick minute while I give instructions in Spanish on how to access interpretation. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman. Con la sede juntamente con mi colega Jasmine, estaremos interpretando la reunión de hoy en español. Si se une con nosotros a través de Zoom, por favor busquen su pantalla un icono de globo que dice "interpretación". Por primer, ahí en ese botón y de ahí seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros, presencialmente ahí está ahorita en la cámara. Por favor, busque al fondo hacia la derecha y encontrará un asistente que le podrá dar audífonos para escuchar en español. Muchas gracias and thank you very much.
You're not welcome.
Thank you very much, Sam.
I tried to sound lady Chaya for interpretation, they said, though. Lady Chaya said, she's gonna do her whole speech in Spanish.
To hear from the public on city matters, except for any matter that are scheduled to have a public hearing.
They said no.
Maximize time for public comments. Council will not offer comments and responses from the day or from the day. Council members or staff may contact speakers following your comment if they raise matters that run themselves to follow. All speakers should begin by standing.
Yeah, whatever.
Each person will have three minutes. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium. A timer on the presentation monitor will display your remaining time. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until you are promoted to speaker. Then you accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone, and you'll see the timer on which to ring the call. Please refrain from profane or preach. Direct your comments to council as a whole and refrain from individual or personal attacks, including disparaging other speakers' motives.
Fuck them other speakers' motives.
First up, we have Gigi Hagupanha.
They are cleaning themselves. Well, Omaru is cleaning himself right now. Oh.
They didn't get the
Oh, the dog is young with lady Chaya.
Do you have any tips for pronouncing on the topic?
Uh, yeah, it's a gopian. Okay.
Look, she got a shirt that says "no" in every shade stays. If they're illegal, no, they can't stay.
See again, I feel like a broken record on this subject. Thank you, Bill, for the funding of a family shelter. Um, nine million is nothing compared to some of the crap uh, that they choose to spend their tax money on, like, you know. I just wonder what money is all the time, but, um, I guess it's not my business or something. Uh, those who voted no, uh, need to look at that human decency within them. Being a human and a parent and still voting no on funding for a family shelter is crazy. Everything I wanted to last week said that you wanted something better than families on the streets. Then those who voted no should be the ones, uh, to figure out another solution. Hands just advocates. We can't do what y'all can do. We don't have that kind of power. You do. We won't stop bringing at least one family to speak every week, uh, so you can see
Tokenizing the fucking illegals.
That families are actively houseless.
Well, they can be actively houseless in their homeland.
Place at the connection site.
They don't have to fucking be here, bitch.
They're houseless every single second until they can get stable
Okay, man.
Into a shelter or into housing. I mean, ideally, right? But having that first step of stability
Yeah, talking and laughing in the background.
Space.
Yep.
Not having to worry about where your next meal is going to come from, where your child's next meal is going to come from.
Bitch, that's the reality for most black Americans.
The first step. Not having heat. As a child, I've, I've lived with no heat. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over something. About a year ago, I was living in a situation where, um, there was a slumlord and, you know, I can't talk about it too much, but there was a slumlord.
Like, what the fuck is your point, bitch?
Any heat, it would not fix the road problem.
They can go back to the warmth in their homeland.
Another layer to families, uh, being houseless is, is these slumlords. And, um, not having anyone to talk to about not being able to pay your rent. That's how a lot of these families that we work with are ending up on the streets. They get, they end, then they get a
They can go back to their homeland and say, I'll have to be here.
Situation where, um, they get to pay
Someone put a violin in the chat.
And then all of a sudden, they're getting, they're getting evicted. Um, not to mention the, the ICE presence.
Well, bitch, if they wasn't breaking the law, they couldn't have to wear the ICE.
Of the families. This is ridiculous and we don't, we can only do so much.
It's the right way, doing immigration is the wrong way.
Our stuff is and we need people who have power to speak up and advocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
That.
We expect we have
This shit just bitch got on, like, what the fuck? Who told you that I was okay to wear, like? If it's not match, what the fuck? Definitely a tether. Exactly, twin. Get off the fucking mic.
Um, hola, mi nombre es Roxana Noguera.
They're gonna translate.
I'm Mary Louxana Noguera. Perfecta. Y bueno, voy a aprender un poquito un caso. Me vale de culpa porque primera vez que estoy I'm here to share my, my case and just to give you maybe this is the first time, but I'm presenting myself in front of you all. Con todo respeto, vengo, uh, como le digo, a expresar un poquito la situación que estamos viviendo nosotros. No, no, I'll do this stuff. I'm coming here to express a little bit about the situation that we're living. No, 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 como inmigrantes, no.
Nobody gives a fuck about the situation in labor, bitch. Take your ass back to your fucking homeland.
Eh, Ayteano. Eh, not only as, as immigrants, but as Latinos, as Haitians. Eh, muchas personas. Eh, por lo menos, eh, en este momento, yo me, me considero una situación crítica. I find myself in a critical situation at this moment.
They can go back to their homeland.
Vengo cinco menoreras y doy mi responsabilidad ahorita porque la mamá la agarró la migri, la migración.
It ain't too critical, your ass is still here.
I have five, um, five minors under my care and two more because their mother was a criminal. Y ahorita responsabilizamos nosotros pero tengo mucho temor porque
On their way from, uh, Columbia.
Right now, I'm under our responsibility, but I'm very scared because I'm about to end up on the street with the kids. Y en este momento no tengo como que se dice el recurso como este para ir
These motherfuckers from Venezuela.
Para poner un texto a los niños. Se tengo mucho miedo porque no tenemos como que se dice un apoyo como un refugio del nudo y entonces I personally, um, I'm getting very nervous and very worried because I don't have any resources or I don't have anywhere for us to go to put a roof over our heads. Yo le digo a usted con todo respeto y que me ayuden. Que me ayuden porque es una situación muy por el que está muy bien. I'm asking you with all due respect to help us because it's a very strong situation that we're living and it's not easy.
Twin, put some, uh, violins in the chat.
For a futuro para nuestros hijos. Y conseguimos una situación ahorita que no es puto que andemos así, no por nosotros porque ya nosotros somos uno adulto pero los niños. It's not easy because we came here to find a better future for our kids, you know, to make things better and now you know, it's not about us, what we deserve because we're adults. It's about, you know, the kids if they don't deserve this.
With that bullshit, I came here working like this place. You came here to eat off the F D A.
Me, me, fucker. Porque yo no le decía mentira. Yo tenía para pagarme arriendo, pero una situación que se llevó a mi cuñada. Nosotros tenemos que buscar la manera de ayudarla y eso. Y until I ask for help because I did have enough money to pay my rent with them when they took my sister in law and took us. They, uh, took up a lot of our resources to help deal with that. Y ya estamos la plata porque la gastamos, pero ya, ya no está. Sacando del apartamento entonces es como desesperando los niños, ya hay frío. Y no tenemos lugar donde yo digo, no, yo me hago un refugio, lo voy a meter, yo hago un refugio porque no tenemos, no tenemos. Y se lo digo con la mano del corazón y pongo medio por, por el medio que le estoy diciendo la verdad. It's a We spent the money we spent it to help take care of them and, you know, the kids are, are worried because we're about to end up, you know, getting kicked out of our apartment and the crow's is coming. And I'm telling you guys with a hand to my heart that this is, um, a very desperate situation to be in. Y bueno, y ahora no pueden ayudar. Ayudan, no, a conseguir un lugar, un pecho. I hope that you all can help us to find a home, to find a roof. Es difícil tener frío. Es difícil tener hambre. Mm-hmm. Es difícil estar en angustia nosotros como mamás. It's difficult to be cold, it's difficult to be hungry, it's difficult to be in agony, especially as a mother. De no tener una solución en la mano o de venir acá, a este país, a un buen futuro en nuestro sí. Porque And not having a solution in our hands and having come over here to this country to help for a better, to look for a better future for our kids. Disculpa porque es, es muy difícil uno para sentir y de presentarlo como siento en este momento o de que uno quiera gritarlo. Pero el no, como pasa en necesidad. We're giving, it's very difficult to stand up here and share all of this with you and, you know, wanting to scream out the things that we're experiencing. But, um, it's very difficult what we're experiencing right now. Y todos tenemos manos de Dios y la mano de ustedes. And so I leave it all in the hands of God and in your hands and I hope that you can help us. No te da la mano la más por mí sino por mucha familia que, que estamos en necesidad y muchas madres, muchos niños. I'm only speaking for myself, but for many families, many mothers and kids that, uh, don't have this and need help because it's not easy. No es fácil estar así. Primero It's not easy to be around, si habla con tanta gente. It's supposed It's supposed to be my effort as down here and talk to so many people, but I need to express what I feel.
Can I say something?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Albright.
Hello, Ashley Albright. I would suggest that the city attorney's office be in charge of CORA for the reasons specified in the filing and attachments I've emailed to each of you. Now, the agency's compliance ranges from helpful to obstructionist and not complying, like Park and Rec, to cooperative, but having very few documents to produce, i.e., unsubstantiated ordinance and regulation compliance, like public art program. I was curious as to how one artist has received an apparently non-competitive contract for life at Mestizo Curtis Park from nineteen seventy-one to present, and how the upcoming contract may or may not be proceeding in compliance with the public art program. So I started sending out CORAs. Both Administration D A V and D C C A have oversight committee but do not make the decisions for the finance public art program because P A P receives the one percent SIP funding for art on the new construction projects. P A P is required to hold a competitive application process for artwork and decides which receives funding, although there is a question about that here. I requested from P A P all documentation regarding the deaccession and recommission of Emmanuel Martinez and was provided five items. The five twenty-seven public art committee vote of deaccession, a D A V stipulation for all items in the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar proposed contract, and two agendas for D C C A with materials on the artist's mural at the park from nineteen seventy-one on. I requested all minutes, notes, and recordings for the five twenty-seven P A P selection committee hearing and was informed there were none. I filed with P A P for the seventy-one, eighty-nine, and ninety-three contracts and was told they had none. I filed with Park and Rec for those contracts and was told by the city clerk, was told the city clerk held contracts. Yet the city clerk said they had no contracts for Mr. Martinez at Park and Rec. I went back to Park and Rec and asked that they not play word games with titles and they again stated they had no contracts for payments. That leaves only Denver Arts and Venues. I asked them for the contracts and they stated they had none, but specifically Park and Rec did. At that point, I forwarded the, uh, information, the D A V email to Park and Rec, Jolene Clark, and received no response. I asked the city council to investigate the CORA lack of compliance by Park and Rec and would suggest the auditor be called to investigate the last fifty-four years of payments, current potentially unauthorized expenditure of SIP funds in violation of P A P ordinance and regulation, and deficient documentation of actions to expend P A P SIP funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Yamar Rubio.
I think they're, uh, online. They should be online on Zoom.
Yamar?
Yatma.
Yamar?
Yeah.
Rubio? They're working on it. Producer? Your mother, Zomi? Jasmine, do you want to ask the, I knew? Pardon, somebody's on the microphone already, ma. Okay, we have to move on. Adele Rafa? Uh, she's not, she's not there. I know how to do this. Thank you. Adele Rafa? Next up, Ashley Garrett? Next up, Jacob Corman?
Yeah, who didn't show up? Exactly, boo, boo.
Iyinti?
I don't know what the fuck they was clapping for, twin. That shit was stupid.
Okay. Hi, my name is Christina Eisenstein. Thanks for having me today. I'm Go ahead. I'm here today to urge you to vote no on Bill twenty-five dash fifteen eighty. This would provide the Community Economic Defense Project with two point seven million more Denver taxpayer money to help them fight evictions against landlords. Um, my family owns a small building at thirteen hundred Adams Street in Commerce Park. Over the past year, the building was under the management of Forster Property Management. Five of our eighteen units were filled with tenants from the Community Economic Defense Project. What followed has been nothing short of a nightmare for our family, other residents in our neighborhood. Two of those tenants at the council of certain C D P members were paid to leave. They asked us to pay their tenants to leave because of the ongoing safety and drug issues. We recently had their apartments tested for meth and
Oh.
Crystal meth and fentanyl and they came back at a significant contamination for both of those. Now we're facing a very costly and exhausting mitigation process. We also have to test any adjacent apartments to see if they're spread. Through the experience of working with the Community Economics Defense Project, I've learned that they account, operate with no accountability. They do not drug test or screen tenants.
No, I've been saying that.
Work, treatment, rehabilitation participation.
They don't do that for C S A. They don't do that for CCA either.
And they knowingly place people with active drug addictions and violent criminal backgrounds in family buildings next to young families. We've had to move two families already. One with a two-year-old child, another who is a young couple. When I tried to reach out to their caseworkers for help and support, they've been unresponsive. Calls go unanswered.
Eight years.
Emails are ignored for days, weeks. I had to move two young families for their own safety to another building. I've had to hire off-duty police officers to be on site at all times for protection. I had to install fourteen cameras to which the CDP was quite angry about because up until that point, they loved to use the word hearsay when I would beg them for support or help with their tenants. Um.
That sounds good, man.
The pro, this program is doomed from the start. And as a small landlord, a mom and pop, I am not a large corporation. I can tell you with conviction that we do not want to evict people, especially in this market where it is difficult to find tenants. We don't want to evict. It is the last possible resort.
Yes, you do.
To do this eviction is because of ongoing drug issues with the tenants and they're asking for more hard-earned taxpayer money for this when they don't actually fix the problem. Thank you.
You ain't saying nothing about that.
If I, if I go through everyone at the bottom, I have to put her at the bottom. That's what I do every single time.
Yeah, whatever, bitch.
Need, need, Didion Schufner.
Just here comes this bitch, Medea, looking like a fucking Christmas tree.
You know, I um, I find it tricky to understand why some of you are um, I guess I'll just say it, why some of you are on council. There is a woman that stood here and through tears talked about her live, lived experience in this city. What is so damn important in front of your computer that you can't look her in the face while she is trying to express the problems that she is having?
I've been saying that, Medea. You're late.
Not everyone has a relationship with you all individually.
You're late, bitch. I've been saying this shit.
But when you don't have a relationship with your constituency
Like maybe the second time I've seen this bitch ever at City Council.
To your constituency. We are going to talk to each other in community about what we do about that pain. Because none of you, I've said it before, none of you are sitting in a seat that holds power. You hold a responsibility. This podium is the position of power in this room. Everyone that comes and speaks here is the one that has the power.
Fucking late, cuz. Don't seem like a damn Christmas tree.
So when you all are, are causing pain.
Don't wear a damn red shirt.
Oftentimes politicians don't give their constituency enough credit because we have a memory of precision. And we will remember when you come and ask us for your vote, how you treated us when we came to you and we spoke in front of you. We will also remember how you treat us when we are in community.
Hurt and.
And we attend events like this R2D Light Rail situation that's going on.
Thanks to this bitch.
When someone in community asks a question and asks you, how do you plan to prioritize the needs of the people that are depending on this light rail and prioritize that above the optics of the businesses that want it ripped out?
Bitch, I said it at the meeting. You wasn't there.
And you ignore them.
Bitch, you wasn't there.
You don't even give them an answer.
You, you, uh, Jane come lately, bitch. We were at the meeting.
Also pay attention.
You were not there.
When there is a lot of humility and compassion for those who are unhoused. They have an expertise in a story that you don't want to beat in. So you should be leveraging that expertise to understand how you can inform your policy. I don't always show up in this space because there's a lot of things to do in these streets.
Bitch, boy.
I show up for two reasons. I will come and I will applaud you when you are doing something above and beyond and I will show up when you got it wrong. And I'm here to tell you right now, councilperson Darren Watson, you are the reason why I showed up today. You have got it wrong. That's your turn. And you owe an answer to the community and we would be emailing you so you can get that answer.
Next up we have June Churchill.
It's all dramatic over nothing. She wasn't having all this dramatics when the sister was up there talking about how her and her seven kids.
Hello, City Council. I know I usually only show up around budget time and in emails, but it was really important to show up today. Um, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you, Council President Sandoval. My name is June Churchill. I sit on the Dottie Advisory Board going here purely by my capacity tonight. So Dottie, uh, at the beginning, being forced term, she, the term she passed a policy called Safety First. That policy has a lot of things in it. I don't have things I put up in front of me. But that policy includes that we must prioritize safety over vehicle delay. Right? So if your community gets an additional thirty seconds added onto it because we added new medians and traffic coming and load the speed limit to save lives, that's okay. But Dottie has now portrayed their own policy now for the second time in also memory. It was first on the Twentieth Avenue Byclaim Project, which got completely redesigned and delayed. But this one is worse because it's on Alameda Avenue. So this project, this traffic coming and road tight was in process for five years with many public meetings, some of which I went to, in which the response I heard from neighbors was overwhelmingly positive. Right? Everyone on Alameda knows that people drive too fast or too reckless and it is on our tier-two high injury network. So I pulled the crash data and if you look at it, Alameda is a solid blue line of crashes in the stretch between Logan and Franklin where the road tight was slated to take place. Now, and Dottie announced on Friday, of course, Friday news done before the weekend, so hopefully it'd get buried. So people forgot it, but I'm not going to forget about it. They said that they were delaying it by two years, doing a completely redesigned for a hundred thousand dollars. Why? Because there was a small group of residents from Alameda, which spoke up headed by Joe Anshutz of the Anshutz family. That means this five years of public outreach got delayed. Even though the road has seen less traffic volume after the pandemic, not more, which would make it even more eligible for road tight. Right? There was nothing in the engineering judgment that has changed in the past, you know, year or so that would warrant this change. In addition, Dottie invited the advisory board. We asked them whether the Alameda project was delayed. And they said, we don't want to conflict with the ongoing construction in Alameda underpass. We don't want to cause more congestion problems around construction. That was a lie. They were actually meaning that from Alameda behind the scenes and giving themselves additional time to decide if they're going to go back on another final design. And they did. And now we have to face two years of delays in construction. We have to face an additional hundred thousand dollars in design costs at a time when our mobility and planning departments, when our staff got a twenty-seven percent haircut. So we're giving them the bond projects and we're saying redesigned is already existing design that we had done, that's been five years to come up with. All to satisfy a small group of community that does living in that area over the city of the community, despite all the public support.
Thank you, June. That's your turn. Next up we have Jay Hope.
Jay Hope probably going to be the last speaker.
Next up we have Amy Kenrich. Kenrich, Amy virtually.
Hi. You got my notes. Um, my name is Amy Kenry and I am a resident of West Washington Park. As you know, as June said, Dottie recently downgraded safety improvements on Alameda Avenue. A high injury street running right through the middle of West Wash Park. After a six-year community process with overwhelming support, Neighborhood Association support, Dottie Advisory Board unanimously approving a letter of full support. For some reason, Dottie listened to certain members of the community and downgraded lifesaving designs for the street. Director Ford has said over and over again, responding to emails from the community, we are not watering down nor compromising on our safety. This is a false statement. Just changing one westbound lane to a turn lane is watering down this project to a point of being ineffective by at least half, reducing traffic. It only now helps eastbound drivers turn left. The westbound sightline problem is still there when these drivers turn left. Additionally, there is no buffer between people moving on the sidewalk and drivers driving over the speed limit on this high injury network road. In a budget crisis, why in the world are we wasting the three hundred thousand dollars already spent on this project and spending an extra a hundred thousand dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. On the last speaker of the evening would be Christina Noto.
She's not here, bitch.
Christina.
Hi, my name is Christina Noto and I am a resident of West Washington Park and I'm also on the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association. And I am here speaking um, as both roles. Um, I have been authorized by my board to speak today on behalf of the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you so much for the time to speak about the recent changes concerning the design of the Alameda New Purposing Project, which is intended to bring relief to a street that is part of Denver's high injury network, as acknowledged by Dottie's board. Back in September, the WWPNA Board and its members shared a formal letter to Councilwoman Alvitres's office and Dottie. This support was based entirely on the design that we publicly discussed embedded with our membership throughout twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five up until July twenty twenty-five, designed to prioritize safety and traffic coming that cuts across the neighborhood via Alameda. We were truly shocked to find that this past Friday, that Dottie had developed a significantly revised plan. This redesign was negotiated well after we submitted our formal letter of support for our original concepts. Crucially, we were not formally notified nor were we included in any active discussions regarding the redesign with other RNOs and community organizations after September fourth, when our letter was submitted. Given that the many, if not most, of the proposed design changes directly impact traffic flow, pedestrian and cyclist safety and potential routing concerns within our neighborhood, we feel that it is, that this exclusion represents a fundamental breakdown of the collaboration process. Moreover, the plan that, moreover, the plan that we were not partying to will be less safe. While we acknowledge, while we acknowledge and address the potential cuts through traffic concerns, we support the original plan as it is ultimately the safest and most collaboratively embedded. WWPNA supports this position of the, the position of the Dottie Advisory Board in its letter to Dottie dated October fourteenth. We urge the department to move forward with the installation of this project in its original well-developed form, featuring a lane reduction to three lanes between Pearl and Franklin and a timing honor. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment.
Looking like a fucking Christmas tree.
Our general public comment session. If we did not get to you today, please join us for our next session or submit your comments in writing. The next session will be held on Monday, November seventeenth. Sign-up begins at five PM on Thursday, November thirteenth.
No matter what day I sign up, they still put you in the box.
And thank you for attending. Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. We will continue with consideration of items to be called out. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution fourteen eighty-eight, a resolution approving a proposed agreement between the City and County of Denver and Wayne and Sons International Airport. Considering cleaning services in the public park area and all three compartments at Denver International Airport. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your comments on Council Resolution fourteen eighty-eight.
Thank you. Um, so I spent the last two weeks talking to the involved parties and under, um, understanding how we got to a place where the sub was cut loose during the contract. Um, I don't, while I don't appreciate how this process has went down, I originally called this item off in hopes that the additional time would help solve some of the issues that I had heard about regarding the contract and that I asked about in committee as well. Um, I feel that, and specifically for this subcontractor, not for Wayne, I'm just to clarify. I feel that this process of requesting more time, um, I wanted to use as an opportunity for me to be able to figure out what was going on and instead I was used as a scapegoat to justify cutting the sub loose from the contract, which is something that I had not and would not have requested um, as a condition of approval. Ultimately, I do not think that the prime would be, I, ultimately, I did not think that the prime should be punished for this softly process nor the sub, um, which is why I am not voting no on this, but I am not happy with the way that this is all shaking out. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution eighteen forty-two. The relation authorization and approving the expenditure in payments from the appropriations account designated liability claims to sum of forty thousand dollars in the terms be payable to Judith Myers and Ramos Law in full payment and satisfaction of all claims related to the civil action captioned Judith Myers versus City and County of Denver, which is filed in District Court for the City and County of Denver case number twenty twenty-five C V thirty and a hundred and three. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your comment on the Council Resolution eighteen forty-two.
Thank you. Um, so after consistency based on my constituents, I see it as my responsibility to ensure that the public is aware of every tax dollar being approved as an expenditure in paying refunds for settlements for City and County of Denver. My office is tracking every dollar by department and as a running total. With the approval of twenty-five eighteen forty-two tonight, the city will approve settlements in in the amounts of forty thousand to settle cases brought against the Department of Transportation and Interspec, Interest, Infrastructure, excuse me, respectively. The approval of these items tonight brings the twenty twenty-five total for taxpayer dollars in city settlements to eight million thirty-nine thousand dollars. This funding is draw from, drawn from a liability claims pool of money that is refilled when necessary from the city's general budget, budget and does not come out of the safety budget. We must therefore pay extra attention in this budget environment that we are watching out for how the city spends our money and that we are making decisions for the future with this knowledge. Um, and let me correct that, not the safety budget, the um, Department of Transportation and Infrastructure.
Thank you, councilmembers. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screen. Council Resolution fifteen sixty-five, a resolution approving a proposed mandatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and Energy Outreach Colorado Efficiency LLC to continue running a turnkey home electrification program for hundred underserved, under-resourced, single-family homes. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your questions on Council Resolution fifteen sixty-five.
Thank you. Um, so I was very excited about this item and I just wanted to know um, if anyone could speak a little to what qualifies families for this program and how folks can get enrolled in this program.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis. Uh, Councilmember Jonathan Rogers, call me Johnny. I'm the acting Deputy Executive Director of Denver's Office of Climate Action, Sustainability, and Resiliency. Uh, we're really excited about this program continuing to be a part of our investment in the community climate action portfolio. Uh, Energy Outreach Colorado is a fantastic partner. They serve customers across the entire state in connecting them to resources, including bill payment assistance programs, uh, rebates and incentives offered by Excel Energy, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, and the Colorado Energy Office. Uh, our partnership with them on this program is really helping to connect folks towards whole home electrification really being the goal. But as we have gone into properties in the past, we have identified things such as mold or asbestos or other conditions that uh, would benefit from attention. This enables us to do home energy assessments, to connect households to services that can help them save money and reduce uh, their carbon pollution in their homes. And we are appreciative of your support in helping connect uh, our constituents to participate in this program. So we can follow up with direct information in terms of sign-ups, registrations, to be connected to Energy Outreach Colorado and our resources. And we'll be working with them as we look at neighborhoods that may be best to increase our marketing efforts because there might be aging fossil gas infrastructure, which rather than paying to replace it and locking ourselves into more fossil fuel consumption, we prefer to electrify those areas and really uh, transition our community in that way.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Those were my one questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Yammar, will you please put Council Bill fifteen ninety on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five dash fifteen ninety be ordered published.
Councilmember Lewis, do you want this to be called out for a vote?
I'm not sure yet. I have, it depends on how my question is answered.
Someone, yeah, maybe? Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. I skipped ahead. Sorry. Let me go back in the script. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screen. Council Bill fifteen ninety, a bill for an ordinance approving a twenty twenty-six operating plan budget for the Rhino Business Improvement District. Councilmember Yammar, will you please put Council Bill fifteen ninety on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five dash fifteen ninety be ordered published.
It has been moved and seconded. It has been moved in second. Comments by members of council, Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, I just have um two questions. One is within the budget for the bid, um are there private security and do you have a plan to contract private security? If there are, if it's not part of the budget.
That was the question I wanted to ask.
Good evening, Councilmember Lewis. How can I answer your question? My name is Jamie Gillis with Centro. Um I'm a consultant that was helped um hired to help with the renewal of the business in the district.
This bitch ran for mayor in twenty nineteen.
Um as far as that renewal, um in the beginning, training engagement and surveying work concern over the last year, safety was a high priority, but safety had a lot of components to it. Lighting, um some particular areas, uh specific areas of the district that had um that were of concern. Um there were also safety issues on Laramore Street in particular related to um speeding motorbikes, um one in which a pedestrian was actually hit and critically injured. And so there's uh quite a wide variety of um safety-related matters. As such, we included a safety line item in the budget um for next year to explore that a little bit further. At this time, there are no private security forces um hired or anticipated to be hired. There is a clean team that's very small on the ground right now. We are anticipating doing an expansion of that clean team and having sort of a hospitality service related to it. Um and there may be some sort of pilot um program in which there's a partnership with the ballpark ambassadors that they do um services within Rhino during certain high pedestrian traffic times. Um our new executive director for the Rhino bid is here, Thierry Medexo. She's um just in from Mesa. She's only been on the ground for three weeks. So her work over the coming months will be to really deep dive in with the community and identify what are the actual issue areas, what's the data? We already have a meeting set up with the chief, uh with the police chief, with the mayor's office, with host um and a number of our other agencies to really try to understand that better, but we don't have a definitive plan at this time to bring in private security.
Will that be a part of the uh future discussions, potentially?
They will be part of uh future discussions over the course of 2026.
Okay. And then two follow-up questions for you. Jamie, the first is around the hospitality piece that you mentioned. Can you just share more about what that means, what that looks like? And then the second is the ballpark ambassadors. I'm not sure what.
So the the ballpark general improvement district um spends a significant amount of money, a significant amount of its budget on the ambassador program. And the ambassadors are cleaning, safety and hospitality focused. So they're all in ballpark branded uniforms. Um again, they don't carry weapons or anything like that. Their effort is really just to be front-facing um folks and proactive in dealing with um visitors and residents in the neighborhood to make sure that their needs are met. So they're kind of a friendly face. It's a program that's used quite frequently in districts all across the country. Um they do everything from um, you know, on baseball days, they'll stand out and provide directions. Here's how you get to the train. Here's how you get to a slice of pizza. Here's how you get to the, you know, the Uber stand. Um and they also can do things like um, they will uh for example, residents in the neighborhood can call and ask for a security or a safety escort. So there it's dark or it's late or you have an employee getting off at midnight and it's dark and they have to walk four blocks to their car and there's some um nervousness around that. They'll provide escorts and things like that. So it really truly is a hospitality service to make um the visitation to the district better for both residents and visitors coming into the area.
Okay. And if the private security were to be added, I know you said it's um not definitive, but potentially a part of future conversations, would that come back to council? For approval, like once you all made the decision or would you just make the decision?
We have to. Um so any district that wants to do any sort of security has to complete an intergovernmental agreement with the Denver Police Department. So that intergovernmental agreement, I believe, and this would be a has to come back to council to be approved. Dennis, you want to speak to that um process? So it does not? Okay. I I know it's intergovernmental has to be completed, but I'm not sure how that works, or broadly.
Thank you.
Uh Brett Newman, City Attorney's Office. Thank you for the question. Uh the intergovernmental agreement between uh the city and the BID uh for security, if it's, if it goes through that way, would likely not need to go through council just because it would not meet the thresholds uh of three point two point six.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Aye. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Name.
Parity. Oh, sorry. Uh Lunar Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, how is the voting announced results? Nine ayes. Nine ayes. Council Bill fifteen ninety has been ordered ordered published. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill fifteen ninety four, a bill for an ordinance approving the 2026 operating plan and budget for the downtown Denver Business Improvement District. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill fifteen ninety four on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill twenty five dash fifteen ninety four be ordered published.
It has been moved in second. Comments by members of council, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Um so I have the same inquiry here is if um currently private security is um hired and if not, is it being complicated in the future?
Good evening. Courtney here, President and CEO of the Downtown Denver Partnership. We carry the program of the Downtown Denver Business Improvement District. And yes, we do have private security as a part of our team. Okay, thank you. Um so with that answer, I would, just like you want to know that I'll be a no on this one as well for the city's reasons. So during my time at RTD, we had um private security in which RTD didn't have any um oversight over those contractors. And so I've been able to see firsthand the trouble that stems from using folks and the absence of oversight. Um I've also expressed my uneasiness with the lack of oversight for bids and gigs um from city council many times um from here um and in the policy newsletters as well that we print um within district date. Um in fact, tonight represents one of my only opportunities to register that uneasiness. We learned um earlier today, you know, I'll be voting no on this, not from the work that you all are doing, but just from my experiences as a board member um and the lack of oversight um with private security. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Madam President. Um may I have someone who can uh help me uh learn a little bit more about how bids are funded? Maybe, yeah, okay. Yeah, Councilor, I'd answer Jake Department Finance. Yeah, thank you. Um so uh so this is a a short set of questions that are unrelated to Councilmember Lewis's concerns. I believe that her concerns are um are are totally um separate. Uh but I did want to just um touch base on um business improvement districts. They um they're funded by the businesses in the district, is that right?
Correct.
And they um, those business owners choose to tax themselves to fund the business improvement district, is that right?
Correct. There is a, yes.
And uh and the businesses get to vote on how they want to spend those funds?
Correct. There's a board of directors for the district and um the residents in the district have a opportunity to weigh in.
Okay. And um and so the businesses have chosen um this budget that we're um that we're looking at from a council perspective, but it's not taxpayer-funded. Um it's uh funded by the business. Well, it's it's funded by the sales taxes uh from the businesses that have opted into the district.
Um I'll I'll correct that not necessarily sales taxes. It could be property taxes or um assessments based on, you know, uh area and uh right-of-way or things like that, but um there's revenue generated from within the district by uh property owners and businesses in the district.
Yeah, and that's a good correction because the Downtown Denver Business Improvement District is a different beast that's funded in a way no other business improvement district is funded. So um so again, not trying to say that that addresses at all Councilmember Lewis's concerns, but I did want to put on the record that these are um funds that are um the businesses have decided to um add the funds themselves and have um an active participant role in how those funds are dispersed. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. It's not the funding um or where the dollars are coming from. It's just the presence of um private security and what what I have seen in my experience as an RTD board member with private private security.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety four. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Aye. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis. Name. Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting announced results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes. Council Bill fifteen ninety four has been ordered published. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill fifteen ninety six, a bill for an ordinance approving the 2026 operating plan and budget for the Colfax Improvement District. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill fifteen ninety six on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill fifteen ninety six be ordered published.
It has been moved in second. Comments by members of council, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Um so I get two different answers on this one and so I'll ask the same question. Is um the armed security are a part of um this current bid and if so, or if not, is there any are there any plans in the future to have arms armed security? Or private security, excuse me?
I'd answer Jake Department Finance. I do actually have Frank Locatori on the on the um zoom call.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to come up here with him.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Okay, so the question, do we have armed security? The answer is no. We have the Denver Dream Center that is our street outreach team. And in a lot of respects, because housing is a safety policy, area of mental health is an issue of security for both the person that is mentally experiencing mental health issue. Uh we do kind of consider this a security um program, but it's with a nonprofit, Christian-based Denver Dream Center and there are new weapons that are carried. It's a street outreach program.
And it's not a private security company, correct, Frank?
That's correct. It's a, it's a nonprofit. They, all of the staff uh that do the street outreach work for the Denver Dream Centers are uh formerly incarcerated and emerging from incarceration and have that lived experience and uh they're the ones that are doing the outreach. Uh the only thing they're armed with are typically granola bars and bottles of water and socks.
Thanks, Frank. I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety six. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Aye. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting announced results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes. Council Bill fifteen ninety six has been ordered published. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill fifteen seventy eight, a bill for an ordinance approving and accepting the downtown Denver area plan, which plan shall become a part of the comprehensive plan twenty forty for the city of Denver pursuant to the provisions in sections twelve dash sixty one of the Denver Resilience Minimum Code. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill fifteen seventy eight on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill fifteen seventy eight be ordered published.
It has been moved in second. Councilmember Heinz, your motion to amend?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that Council Bill twenty five dash fifteen twenty eight be amended in the following particulars. One, on page two, line three, strike fourth and replace with seventh. Two, on page two, line four, strike two zero two five zero one seven eight and replace with two zero two five zero one seven eight A.
It has been read in second. Comments by members of council on the amendment to Council Bill fifteen seventy eight. Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Council President. This amendment replaces the previously filed copy of the downtown Denver area plan with a revised copy of the plan that inserts language in the plan regarding how overlay overlap of existing small area plans within the boundary of the Denver, the downtown Denver area plan will be addressed.
Thank you. Seeing no question or comments from other colleagues, Madam Secretary, we'll call on amendment to Council Bill seventeen seventeen fifteen seventy eight. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Aye. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting announced results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. The amendment to Council Bill fifteen seventy eight has passed. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill fifteen seventy eight on the floor for publication as amended?
I move that Council Bill fifteen seventy eight be ordered published as amended.
Madam Secretary, we'll call on Council Bill fifteen seventy eight as amended. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting announced results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. Council Bill fifteen seventy eight as amended has been ordered published. As amended. This concludes the items being called out. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Councilmembers, remember that this is a consent or block vote and you need a vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put the resolutions and proclamations for adoption and the bills in final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that the resolutions and proclamations be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Uh fifty, or excuse me, um series of twenty twenty five, eighteen fifty two, eleven ninety seven, fifteen seventy nine, fifteen eighty one, fifteen eighty two, fifteen eighty four, fifteen eighty six, fifteen sixty three, fifteen forty four, fourteen eighty eight, fifteen sixty five, fifteen sixty six, fifteen seventy two, sixteen oh eight, sixteen oh nine, eighteen forty two, zero nine one four, one five one four, one five one seven, thirteen twenty, thirteen fifteen thirteen, fifteen fifteen, fifteen sixteen, fifteen eighteen, fifteen nineteen, fifteen twenty, fifteen twenty one, fifteen twenty two, fifteen twenty three.
Thank you. It has been read in second. Madam Secretary, we'll call. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Gutierrez. Torres. Albitres. Aye. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Zanval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, closing voting announced results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. The resolutions and proclamations have been ordered published and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. There are two proclamations being read this evening. Council President Protem Ramara Campbell and Councilmember Albitres and Gilmore, will you please join me in reading Proclamation eighteen fifty five?
Yes, Council President. I move that Proclamation twenty five dash eighteen fifty five be adopted.
Oh, you read the proclamation first?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I put the wrong place on the script. No, I'm sorry about that. Um yes. Sorry about that. Um yes, I would be happy to read the proclamation. Uh a proclamation honoring the Dia de los Muertos Parade and Festival. Whereas Dia de los Muertos is a treasured cultural tradition that celebrates life, honors loved ones who have passed, and affirms the enduring connection between generations through remembrance, reflection, and joy. And whereas Dia de los Muertos is observed annually on November first and second, bringing families and communities together to build altars, ofrendas, share food, art, and music, and adorn spaces with maribolds, candles, and photographs as symbols of love and continuity. And
Whereas this cherished observance rooted in indigenous and Spanish traditions reminds us that death is not an end, but a continuation of life's circle. And that the memory of those we have lost continues to guide and inspire us. And whereas the Dia de los Muertos Parade and Festival, taking place on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, unites Denver's vibrant diverse communities in honoring this meaningful heritage through art, dance, music, and cultural expression that celebrates both remembrance of life and Sorry. Whereas the Dia de los Muertos Parade and Festival and its dedicated founders, Noberto Marion and Cesar Alberto D'Agado, artists and volunteers have created a space that fosters cultural pride, understanding, and unity. Showcasing the contributions of Denver's Latino, Mexican, and Mexican-American communities that enrich the city's cultural fabric. And whereas the city and county of Denver proudly recognize Dia de los Muertos as a time for reflection, connection, and celebration of the tradition that strengthen our sense of belonging and community.
Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, that the Denver City Council recognizes the outstanding work of Noberto Mojardín and Cesar Alberto Delgado to create this beloved Denver community celebration. Section two, the clerque remis quarter shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and transmit copies to the Dia de los Muertos Parade and Festival.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President Sandoval. I move the proclamation twenty five dash eighteen fifty five be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, oh comments.
Comments.
Comments from members of council? Councilmember Albedres, start us off.
Great, thank you, Council President. Bienvenidos a todos por estar aquí con nosotros. Thank you so much for being here with us today. I am so proud of the work that Beto has done for our community and bringing people together. It's such an inspiration and to remember the Mexican culture in this very special way. And I just want to really recognize this amazing individual for his love and care for community and especially our children. His focus is on making free events for community. And that's something we need more of and multi-generational events, something where I can take my grandma, my parents, and my son. And those are very hard to come by, so thank you for your perseverance all of these years to make all all of these events happen that you do on a continuous basis. And congratulations on an amazing event this year for Dia de los Muertos. Thank you, Beto.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President Ramaro Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. Um I am so incredibly proud uh to co-sponsor this proclamation for Dia de los Muertos. Um there are other council members here who weren't able to be here, but also um are in support of this um and co-sponsoring this proclamation. Um Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez is is not here, wanted to be. Honoring you, um Beto, uh and Cesar, I think is just amazing. Your partnership, um what you have created together. You've dedicated your time, your talent, your treasure, your creativity to the Denver community. This honoring and programming, I have to read this because I was going to be all over and we talked about this. Um but this honoring of the programming for Dia de los Muertos couldn't have been done um without your effort, without your love. Um and there are so many creative events that you've been part of. This is just one. And you do it with with um with community. Um but over the years, I'm just thinking about like Latin fashion, okay, but keeping it all afloat um with too small but mighty kids, too small but mighty businesses, along cold taps. Um the hair salon, Yaki's, um the restaurant is just amazing. And if people haven't tried it, they definitely should. Um but the creativity that shines from you and that you give so generously to community is amazing. Your heart and capacity of overwhelming kindness and patience and trust is remarkable. We've spent time together talking and crying and laughing. Um but what I always walk away with is how you carry hope and you carry resilience and you carry love. And I keep saying love because I think that's such a part of who you are and what you bring to every space that you enter. Um when I lost my dad and when my mom passed less than a year ago, um your compassion and understanding for the healing that is needed um is astounding. And creating the space with the Dia de los Muertos event is a way that you've brought to a broader community, to individuals, but to a broader community that need for um for remembering our loved ones and bringing people together. It is so incredibly hard and everybody carries someone in their hearts. Um and so I'm just so incredibly grateful and thankful for who you are, for what you bring, for your for the community that you have here. Um, thank you. And to thank you to everybody who came and support. I think this is a testament of of the impact that you have and um and the impact that you will continue to have in this community. And again, you don't do it alone in a partnership and seeing you and Cesar there with your family is beautiful. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Proton. Is it Councilmember Gilmore?
Thank you, Council President. Uh it's an honor uh to co-sponsor uh this proclamation and to recognize all of the amazing and beautiful work that you do. And we know um every year at the beginning of November that uh that veil gets very thin um between here and there. And I remember um helping my grandmother uh harvest maribolds and string them together. And um it's so beautiful to see the way that you brought in uh the artistic and creative side of what it really means to connect with our ancestors, talk to them, and keep that love alive. And it doesn't necessarily have to be um a solemn event. It can be full of color and love and creativity. And you show that time and time again. And so congratulations, um honored to support. Um thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Um where to start, Beto? It was a long time ago that I first met you. I was trying to think about it. I think I was twenty one um when I met you at Steve Trujillo's salon. Um and I think I was dying your hair blonde for a fashion show that Steve and I were putting on. Um so thank you for, and I remember, I think you had just come to Denver and you were fairly new. And we welcomed you and here you are, how many years later, um bringing such joy and inspiration in a time where we don't feel very inspired and in a time where um a lot of what Trump is doing is bringing us apart, not bringing us together, taking away laws that we fundamentally have had for a very long time. And in those moments, it's really hard to find inspiration. It's very hard to find connection to community. And thank you for being steadfast leader in that and filling um our spaces with color, with people, and reminding us that we're all better together. And reminding us of the deep cultural um fabric that Dia de los Muertos brings for all of us. I remember I was in Pascaro one time for Dia de los Muertos and it was one of the um my dad had just passed not long ago. And it was one of the most profound experiences I had connecting with my ancestors. Um so I'm glad that people who may not understand what Dia de los Muertos means for you to remind us. And my saying is, no one's really gone and how these people are really gone when we stop saying their name. And so every Dia de los Muertos, I get to say all my beloved friends and family and loved ones' names. And that's so profound and so important for me as one of the Latinas up here on city council attempting to do the work of the people. So thank you, Proton Ramaro Campbell, for bringing this forward. It sure means a lot. Um and with that, Madam Secretary will call. Council members, Consulos Gutierrez. Torres. Albedres. Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore. Hines.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis.
Aye.
Ramara Campbell.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close voting, announce results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, proclamation fifteen eighty eight has been adopted. We now have time for the proclamation acceptance. Council Proton, who would you like to invite up?
Here we go. I'd like to invite up um Beto Mojardín and Cesar and your family and whoever else you want to bring up.
Thank you.
Noberto, I should say.
Thank you. Thank you so, so much. In the name of my family and our community. Um before I get something written down, I'm not going to be able to talk. I want to say thank you. Thank you to the city council for this beautiful proclamation. And it's not only for me, but with the people that with all these years. Um since Council Sandoval knows me since then, I have dedicated all my time to build a family. Not only business, it's it's a family that I needed at the time. As a survivor of mental, social, and physical abuse, I ran away when I was nineteen and I said, you know, I have to do something with myself and it's not going to be here in Arizona. It will have to be in Colorado. The first time I touched Colorado is because I came um to dance the Vatican and invited me to dance for the Pope the second when he did uh the youth program at the time. And that's how I touched Colorado. And then when I went back to Arizona, eh you know, and and then finding out what I was going through. Uh I said, that's going to be my new world. That's going to be my new family. Start all over again. So I decided to move here. I started living on the streets and then going to school. I mean, the great thing I have to mention because that was my future as a hairstylist. And from there, everything, the restaurant, the community, everything I do, I do as a thank you. Because you know, I was, my grandma was teaching me to say thank you to whoever is next to you and help you. But um I would like to say thank you to the people that without them, this event couldn't be possible. And of course, I'm not going to mention in a hundred, but um the first of all, I would like to say thank you to my family, Stephanie Salas, our baby's mom, Cesar Delgado, my partner, Jonathan, my older son, Joni, Noberto Junior, Nathan, my good son, and my good friends. That you always have a counselor over there when when you when you're going through rough times. And sometimes you think I'm not doing enough and they put you on your place. And which is a good friend of mine, Fabel Melendez, Consul General de México, Yoli Casas from Vive Wellness, Rachel Garcia, Linda Sosa, Diana Finera uh from uh Vuela Porto Salud, uh Alina Vázquez, Brenda Aguileria, and Miriam García. Those people, they really pushed me very hard to do this event this year and thank you for your support. Um to volunteers that, yeah, there were so many volunteers, but these volunteers, they went over to stay up to two, three in the morning cleaning because at the end, it was only one day. So we had to set up in a couple of hours and take it out. Many, many hours. Our volunteers, Leslie Hernández, Isu Familia. She's been with me every year that I have been in the Altair's. I think it's the only family that they're always there every year. Miguel Rosales, Miguel Olivieso, David Chef. I believe that he's the chef of my restaurant, Magisterado. So he helped me so much. Alejandro Rendón created the whole car, the the features, Celeste. Uh Paola Muros, Norma Estrada, Equipo de Viva Wellness y el equipo también de Vuela Porto Salud. Que gracias a ellas crearon miles de flores con sus programas hermosos que tienen tanto para niños como productos. Um Norma, Jean Herrera, Lucila Dorado de Alma de México. Gabriel Escalante, México en la piel, folclórico. Alberto Giros, de maestro de folclórico, basarse así. Janet Trujillo, de Fiesta Colorado. Without them, bienestar no hubiera vida sin en tu the cherries on the cake because it's our folclóricos that represent our Colorado. And our sponsors, Vive Wellness, Invisión de Color, Juana Tequila, Mexican Restaurant, La Morena, Mexican Restaurant, Flamer Magensin, Carmelia, Consul General de México, Consulado General de México, Colorado Home Group, Corina Cohen, uh Hamilton Pats, Bufet de Bogados, and Portal de Colorado y el comercio de Colorado. They are the ones, and I still have a huge list of many more, but these are the ones that have been with me for the past, at least seven years. And this entertainment, they put their time and effort to come from other states and here locally. Carlos Oros, Co-Sound System, Deverso Andino, Ballet Folclórico Alma Mexicana, Ballet Folclórico en la piel, Ballet Folclórico Basasi, Ballet Folclórico Venezuela Renaciente, Ballet Folclórico Fiesta Colorado, Ballet Folclórico, What, What, WhatsApp Peru, USA, WhatsApp, Aztec Dance Fusion, Dance Azteca, Get Sally, La Trenza de María, Grupo Hombre Lobo, Cantante, Edición, Cantante Adriana Castro, Martínez, Vic Morales de Semañan, uh Gira Zul Huerta, Josefina, Jonathan García, Sheriff Police Department, Mont Horses. And thank you to them because they brought so much support. It was like thirty of them. They're supporting us in everything we needed. And Escaramuza Flores de Leña, Adelitas Colorado, and Unimisión with uh their media and co-hosting the event, Juan Carlos, Javier Castro, Yacar Lino Magaña, uh El Barro de Salazar. Thanks to all of them and we still have so many people that they got involved in this whole session, wonderful event that, you know, I want to make sure that they get the recognition because it's not about me. It's about them, but I know the other ones that I didn't mention, they won't add, they won't, they won't add. They made me because they know we did it together and we love. It's these people that they've been for years with me. It's not only this time. And in this um, in this uh event, you know, I created it when I brought, when I, when I came here uh to to the United States at the age of ten. I didn't know about Dia de los Muertos. The only thing I knew about Dia de los Muertos, it was because my grandmother, we used to live in a small town, like three hundred people. And you know those typical ones that they know everything? She was a nurse. She was uh everybody, if they were going to have a baby, they would call, hey, Nati, can you help me? My daughter is having the baby. There goes my grandma helping the baby. And there's me going with her. And then um food at night. If you didn't have time to cook, my always my grandmother would have a table outside of your room and she would be cooking either tacos or something, one thing at a time, but they put, which is And she would be cooking either tacos or something, one thing at a time, but they put guaches right there and eat. Um, and for Dia de los Muertos, is the, in, where I'm from, is the desert. So it was no this colorful thing that you see here, okay? So, but she made it colorful. You know, it was the desert. It's the desert of Sonora. And when she would make Dia de los Muertos, the flowers, she would make all the arrangements for all the people that they wanted to get one. So when I would wake up, when I was little, all I remember is the whole ceiling full of different flowers. And then I would see her going and picking one and creating this specific adoration for certain people. So that colorful and the creativity, obviously, I got it from her, you know? And so when, when, when they say Peritas, basically, I was only ten. But my uncles, they didn't want me to be with her because they said I was a real troublemaker. And they couldn't handle it. She's like, you're going to end up killing your grandmother. One day you have to go be better somewhere. At the time, you know, my mom, she wanted it to get to me, maybe nothing when I was a baby. So I said, uh, my grandma asked me the question. I said, Norberto, would you like to meet your mom? And, and of course, you know, when you see your cousins going across the border and buying McDonald's and then coming back and you don't get nothing, the first thing I was thinking, I was like, wow, I want to get McDonald's for my first time. Which I love McDonald's and I still get the Happy Meals. But that's, that's kind of the innocence, you know, that I never thought about her. You know, all what she has done, all the moments living together since I was a baby with her. All I wanted was McDonald's at that moment. And so when I told her yes, she never said, no, don't go. No, she's like, okay, no problem. And the advice that she told me, she's like, just remember, whenever you feel like you need me, all you have to do is just scoop things. You know, put the beans, salt, uh, green peppers, garlic, cilantro. And when it starts boiling and smells, everything is going to be okay because I'm there with you. So that advice helped me to be the survivor that I am. Because you never think that when you come to the United States, first I wanted McDonald's. I never got it. I got it until I wasn't able to afford it because my family, you know? So, eh, at the time, uh, not feeling the support. And then thinking that you're going to be protected and then you become abused in different ways, only because you were good at everything, good at cleaning, good, responsible. At the age of ten, I was already taking care of two hundred cows in Mexico. So when I come here and I see vacuums, I love vacuuming because I never had a carpet or a vacuum. So, or washing the car because I never had, started a car. So, you know, everything for me at the beginning was because I wanted to help and because I enjoyed. But I never thought this would end up being myself. You know, when I was, want to be there, I couldn't have friends. The only time I would be able to go and practice for cross-country, which I was a champion of the stage at the time. You know, I was going to go and represent, eh, United States in, in Olympics in China at the time. And I did my saving for years. And that I clearly remember that I asked my mom at six in the morning, I said, Mom, I need the money that I saved all year to be able to buy my uniform, my, my, my ring for my graduation, my keeping gun. And everything, you know, that I needed for my graduation. And my trip, my cousin wanted the money to pay the tickets. And she's like, don't you think you need to pay rent? And I said, Mom, why you did that? That's the only question I ask. I'm, Mom, why you, why you did that? Because I knew at the moment, she has spent all the money. And I knew I was going to go. You know, so what do I get? I get my last slap. I get my last insult. I get treated like, hmm, like I don't want anybody to be treated like that. And, and, and at the moment, I just, I let them hit me as much as they wanted and to take a turn. Because one thing that I learned from my grandma, she would never raise her hand to another person. And always listen to another person. Sometimes, because she thought I was going to leave with her, with her life. She never thought she was going to put me so vulnerable by me being by myself in another country with someone else, thinking that it's the people that are going to protect you. So anyways, um, eh, I knew one, I packed my little stuff. And I kept walking forward, you know, after they did so much. And going to school at seven, six in the morning. And I remember her screaming in my back, my own mom telling me, Norberto, you couldn't go to China anyways. You're illegal in the United States. I didn't even know. Because I remember I came with a visa, showing the passport, that's all I could remember. But I didn't know I was illegal at the time. And then, eh, I keep walking. I never looked back. All these voices there in the back of my, of my head because I never looked back. And she did something. She's like, um, Norberto, you're never going to be anything without me. Come back, Pro任. That's, those are the last words I heard from my mom until now. And, and trust me, when I decide to move here and create my own world, I mean it. That's why I hear all my clients, all the people, men or women, I call them Mijo or Mija. And sometimes, sometimes I have to explain it because they're like, oh, why you calling me Mijo? I'm too old. You don't know why you calling me Mija? You know, like, I can be your mom. You know, it's just the love that you have for somebody and I treat everybody the same. And I never thought that I was going to stay here for forever and need my great partner, Cesar, my best friend. And you know that he's always there for me. And then continue with the businesses, the hair salon. And the hair salon, I think, it helped me to be able to be closer to the community and to see the need of the community. Because that's when you get to know your community, what is it that they need, the problems they go through. And then me being involved more politically with people because as you start getting involved with people and then you start getting involved, not only politically, but religious. In my hair salon, I have, they can do one look of there, but as a client, I have Jews, Christians, Catholics. I think everybody forgets, as soon as we're walking there, maybe because they like me, maybe because they like what I do. Maybe because they feel that there is a space where I support them and I care for them regardless who they are, you know? So thanks to that, eh, I started building a community, you know? And thanks to building this community and having their love, God gave us these kids. I'm fifty-one, imagine. I have a three-year-old. But I think that's the blessing that we get. And, and for me, sharing Dia de los Muertos or any type of event that I do is always to leave something for our next generations. That's the whole meaning. I never thought I was going to have kids, so I told Cesar. Because Cesar, he's like, Norberto, you're using extra money that we don't have, you know? Always guiding me on that. But I always said, no, it's going to be worth it because if one day something happens to me, at least someone is going to bring you a cup of soup. And you know, so you wouldn't die alone. But look, God gave us, uh, my son, Jonathan. We adopt him and they became married with Stephanie. They had their babies. Stephanie already had Nathan, my older son. They decided to have Johnny. And they decided to have a baby for us, which is Norberto, the one down here. And that's how we created this family. But thanks to everything, thanks to Colorado, thanks to the community, thanks to the families that are here with me today, you know? This happiness, I can enjoy more because I'm sharing it with them and they share with me the stories. Um, all these proclamations, I would like to dedicate it this time to my son, Nathan. Nathan is, come here, Neil. He's, he's the, he's the older brother. I always say, he's the king, you know? Because the little ones are the prince. Okay? And sometimes when we grow up, you know, we grow up to try to be our best. And I'm trying to be the best for you, son. And this is for you. So you can always remember. I'm always crying. So you can remember your dad that is here and you know you have your dad. But we read your, your dad's and all these people are here behind you. They're breaking your heart too anytime I'm not here anymore. So thank you for everything you do and, and being the best older son ever, okay? Thank you so much.
They, do you want to have them come up and do a procession out? So that everybody can see, because I think it's amazing that you have, do you want to have them do a procession out and?
Have them come and say, Norberto, and go up that way.
Yeah. Yeah, should we have them come up or?
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you all. When we have, um, Councilmember Heinz, will you please read proclamation fifteen eighty-one?
Yes, Madam President. Proclamation twenty-five fifteen, or eighteen fifty-one honoring Gregory D. Fezel. Whereas Gregory D. Fezel has faithfully served the Colorado Rockies Major League Baseball team for thirty years. Joining the organization in its early years and rising through leadership roles to become president and chief operating officer, providing steady guidance and visionary leadership to Denver's hometown team. And whereas Greg Fezel, former professional athlete in both the USFL, Denver Gold, and NFL, brought his experience, discipline and passion for sports to the Rockies organization after a successful business career in Colorado with the Denver Coca-Cola Bottle Brewing Company, helping secure key partnerships that strengthened the franchise from its earliest days. And whereas the Colorado Rockies achieved memorable success on the field, including their remarkable two thousand and seven run to the World Series, franchise's first, and multiple postseason appearances that united fans across Colorado in pride and excitement, showcasing the team's competitive spirit and resilience. And whereas the Colorado Rockies also successfully hosted landmark events that elevated Denver's national profile, including the nineteen ninety-eight and twenty twenty-one Major League Baseball All-Star Games, the twenty sixteen NHL Stadium Series, NCAA CC versus DU, outdoor games in Coors Field, and numerous large-scale concerts and community celebrations, bringing global attention and economic impact to our great city. And whereas Greg Fezel prioritized community engagement and served as executive director of the Colorado Rockies Baseball Club Foundation, expanding charitable impact throughout Denver and the Rocky Mountain region by supporting youth sports, education, public safety partnerships and family-centered community programs. And whereas he has further served the people of Denver through civic leadership roles, including on the Visit Denver Executive Committee, former chair of the Visit Denver Board of Directors, the Downtown Denver Partnership Board, and the Denver Police Foundation Board, demonstrating a deep commitment to the well-being, reputation and future of the city and county of Denver. And whereas Greg Fezel's legacy is defined not only by business success and major league milestones, but by a belief that baseball is a civic institution that brings families and neighbors together, creating shared memories at Coors Field and strengthening the cultural fabric of Denver. And whereas in twenty twenty-five, after four decades of service to the Denver community, Greg Fezel announced his retirement, marking the end of an era of leadership characterized by dedication, partnership and an unwavering commitment to the people of Denver. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, that the Denver City Council hereby acknowledge, or hereby honors Gregory D. Fezel for his extraordinary service to the Colorado Rockies organization, to Major League Baseball and to the people and community of Denver, accordingly, November tenth, twenty twenty-five is proclaimed to be Greg Fezel Day. Section two, that the clerk and recorder shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to Greg Fezel. Section, this copy right here.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Heinz. Your motion to adopt?
I move that we adopt proclamation twenty-five dash eighteen fifty-one.
It has been moved in seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you colleagues, community members and friends for being here tonight. It is my great honor to bring forward this proclamation recognizing a leader who has made an indelible impact on Denver's sports, business and civic community, Gregory D. Fezel. For three decades, Greg has been the pillar of the Colorado Rockies organization, guiding our hometown team from its early years all the way to his tenure as president and chief operating officer. Under his leadership, the Rockies have given our city some of its most memorable moments. From the magical two thousand and seven World Series run, which I was fortunate enough to have a company that had tickets to that game. So I got to see, uh, my only World Series game right here in Denver. And, uh, and hosting All-Star Games, outdoor hockey events and the concerts that have brought Denver to the national stage. But what stands out most about Greg isn't just his success on this field, it's his unwavering commitment to Denver itself. Through the Colorado Rocky, uh, Rockies Baseball Club Foundation, Greg has helped expand opportunities for young people, families and neighborhoods throughout our region. I've also had the privilege of serving alongside Greg on the Visit Denver Board, where I saw firsthand his thoughtfulness, professionalism and deep care for the city's future. As the council member representing downtown Denver, I'm especially, I've especially appreciated his leadership on the Downtown Denver Partnership Board, where he's helped strengthen the heart of our city, not just through business growth, but by fostering community connection and civic pride. Greg's story reminds us that baseball, like good governance, is a team sport. It's about showing up, leading by example and creating spaces where people can come together. Where that, whether that's in a packed stadium, a Coors Field, or in a boardroom planning for Denver's future. Tonight, as Greg marks his next, his next iteration after four decades of service to Denver, we honor not just his career, but his spirit of collaboration, integrity and love for this city. So on behalf of the Denver City Council and with heartfelt gratitude, uh, as we vote, I don't want to say we've, uh, adopted it just yet. Um, I sure hope that, um, we will proclaim, we will proclaim November tenth, twenty twenty-five as Greg Fezel Day here in the city and county of Denver. Congratulations, Greg, and thank you for all you've done to make Denver a city we can all be proud of.
Councilmember Delectin?
Uh, thank you so much, Councilmember Heinz, for bringing forward this, uh, proclamation. And to, uh, Mr. Fezel, um, uh, you're a giant of a man. I know he says you stand up to accept this proclamation. Folks are going to get what I'm saying. You have to stand up now. Sorry. We got to still vote, but, um, we all know, um. But Greg is not only a giant in his physical size, he is in his heart for community. Uh, I've had the honor and pleasure of, uh, um, watching your leadership and your heart and service um, as you give to the communities, um, in ballpark and all of identifying District Nine, but specifically in our ballpark communities. Um, there's not a time, there's not a, uh, uh, an event, uh, that my office or the neighbors surrounding, uh, Coors Field, um, that they can't reach out, sir, and, and you answer with yes. Uh, I am absolutely grateful for your partnership. I'm certain your family is glad that you're fake retiring at this point, um, and that you'll be spending more time with them. Um, while we still expect and intend to see you within community. So God bless you, you and your family, and thank you for all the good works that you've done on throughout this community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Greg, congratulations. Thanks for, uh, all the things you've done, uh, to make going to the ballpark a, a fun event. Uh, the Rockies are actually the only, uh, team that, that is welcome to the council, uh, to their, their facility. Uh, once a year, Greg invites us out. It's not a fancy deal. It's an evening at the ballpark with some camaraderie, camaraderie and some ballpark food. And we get to watch the game and, uh, catch up. And, and it's always been a, a pleasant evening. And I just want to thank you for that. It's always been fun. And, uh, I'm going to miss seeing you around the ballpark. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, Greg, I'll miss you. I'll miss your steadfast leadership. I was thinking about when I first met you, it was when I was looking for councilman Montero, so since twenty thirteen. And I've seen you grow, you've seen me go from a council lady to now council president. Um, I really enjoyed serving on Visit Denver Board with you, and I even enjoy more watching a game with you. Sam, how you do it, but you're a multitasker, and you know what's happening on all things. And so I remember being one time with my husband, and I was like, have you seen him? He made me the score of all the games, and he was like, yeah babe, that's his job. And I was like, but how did he do it? I was like, there was just one iPad in front of him, and so I was. Um, just your professionalism, your kindness, and your thoughtfulness, you've always been so thoughtful. Um, I had a couple incidences, and you just always pulled me aside and asked me how, like genuinely asked me how I was doing, not because you needed anything, but because you actually genuinely cared how I was doing. And that doesn't come along very often in these roles, you always feel like you're being asked for something. So thank you for that, and I, I really, really meant a lot to me over these years. And um, don't go too far, because we'll, we'll still need you around. Madam Secretary, roll call? Councilmembers, consultants, deputies? I'll be there. Hi, Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis? Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President, sound off?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, Cluj, where you announced results?
Nine ayes.
Nine ayes, Proclamation eighteen fifty-one has been adopted. We now have time for the five minutes for the acceptance speech. Councilmember Heinz, would you like to call up?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think Mrs. Fiesel wanted to send, uh, no, I, Mr. Fiesel, if you'd come forward and uh give us a few words.
Thank you so much. I'm blown away. I mean, I, I really am for um guy growing up in Barstow, California, um never thinking that he would work for a professional sports franchise or live in Denver, Colorado. I mean, it's been, it's truly been an honor. I think it's been five mayors since I've been around, so, you know, I'm older than dirt. But it's been an honor working with you, and I appreciate and I value the tough job you guys have um and your commitment to the city. Uh, we love Denver, we're not going anywhere, we'll be around. Um, we'll be at the ballpark next year, so hopefully we'll see all of you there. But, I mean, we are, we are honored, so thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, council colleagues, we're gonna take just a five-minute, let me repeat, five minutes. I need you to be back in here at forty-five, forty-six, so that we can start our public hearing. And we'll go outside and take a photo.
Terrible. Yeah. Oh, that's right, I think I didn't have that. Okay. We didn't see the council, had to get it. Oh, aye.
Oh, tell it, man. Speaking to his hood, man. Yeah, he's just pumping his hood, man, so. Of course, every joint. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's every joint. That's the, uh. That's what men is all, that's. He talks hard. When you know it'll come back from recess, that's what we can say.
All right, should we just get started? Yeah, okay. We have one required public hearing tonight. As a reminder, councilmembers need to turn on their videos, turn their video on during the vote. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium on the presentation monitor on the wall. You will see your time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until our meeting host prompts you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin by their remarks by telling council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable, do insert their home addresses. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you are available for questions with council. Speakers will have three minutes, there is no building of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your commentary interpreter. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual personal attacks. Councilmember Gilmore, will you please put Council Bill fourteen forty-five changing the zoning classification for eight ninety North Grove Street and Villa Park on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill fourteen forty-five be placed upon final consideration and due pass.
It has been moved in seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill fourteen forty-five is open. Can you please have this back up?
The evening council, my name is Will Prince with Community Planning and Development, and I will be presenting the uh rezoning application for eight ninety North Grove Street. I request to rezone from ESUD to ERX three. This email will go over the requests, the location context, the process, and the review criteria. Uh, this property is six thousand two hundred fifty square feet. That square feet is a vacant corner lot, and again, the rezoning request is from urban edge single unit D to urban edge residential mixed use, three stories with the goal to develop townhouses. Uh, this site is impacted by the West Area rezoning memo that was released a little over a year ago, and has a concurrent housing, a concurrent affordable housing plan in conjunction with this rezoning. Continue on to the location and context, this is located in Council District Three with Councilmember Torres. And is in the, located in the Villa Park statistical neighborhood. Again, the existing zoning is ESUD, which is the majority of the surrounding area, with EMX three along Federal, um some IA, as well as ERX three, which was the application that was approved earlier this year, uh just down the street. As for existing context, for land use, again, this site is vacant, um with the surrounding area being single unit, um in a mix of industrial and commercial along Federal, and public, quasi-public with a school, elementary school uh down the block on Long Lake Avenue. As for the building form and scale, again, you can see the subject property here on the top left as a vacant corner, and some nearby single unit, uh single-story properties along the street. Uh, and again, this property is impacted by the West Area Plan rezoning memo that was released a year ago, which outlines issues related to displacement, increased development pressures, and implementation of adopted plans in the west, in West Denver. And with that, potential rezonings are not consistent with intent of plans until further stabilization program tools and regulatory changes are in place. And with that, um our applicant has worked with host as well as CPD to uh sign up voluntarily, sign up for the housing plan. This plan includes a negotiation alternative to mandatory affordable housing requirements on this individual site. And the affordable housing plan requires that the greater twenty percent of the units, at one hundred and ten percent of the area median income, um be affordable, ultimately one of the five units in this property will be for sale in this situation. And the income restricted unit will have at least three bedrooms. Continuing on to the process, this received its information notice in August. It was uh heard at the planning board public hearing on October first with the recommendation for approval. Was presented to the South Platte River Committee also in October, and is here today at the city council public hearing with proper noticing here on November tenth. As for public comments, there was one letter of support, media application, and one uh comment of moderate support with comments or concerns related to hate, and there have been no or no comments to date. Moving on to the review criteria, uh so I will review each of the criteria, starting with consistency with adopted plans. And for this site, we have three plans, Comp Plan twenty forty, Blueprint Denver, and the West Area Plan. For comprehensive Plan twenty forty, this meets several goals related to equitable and affordable inclusive, strong and authentic neighborhoods, as well as environmentally resilient. Uh, this rezoning will meet those goals and uh further the policies of Comp Plan twenty forty by increasing additional housing units, allowing more building forms on an infill location, amenities, including transit and other services. Continuing on to Blueprint Denver, this is identified as urban edge, uh which contains elements of suburban, urban context. Small, multi-unit residential areas, as well as commercial areas are typically embedded around one- and two-unit areas, and block patterns are generally regular with a mix of alley access. Continuing on to future place type, this is identified as high, medium residential, which includes a mix of mid-scale, multi-residential options. Some neighborhood serving mixed use may be appropriate, and buildings are generally up to five stories in heights, and scale and transition between different uh place types. Uh, as for future street type, Ninth and Grove are local, which are not impacted by the zone district. And with Blueprint Denver, uh growth strategy, this identifies as all other areas of the city, ten percent ground growth and twenty percent housing growth.
I would never get to speak.
Recording in progress.
Guidance here, additional policies that are implemented through this rezoning, in particular, land use and build form housing policy number two. Uh, this rezoning will meet that policy by um the defined policy as diversifying housing options by exploring opportunities to integrate missing middle housing into low and low median areas. Um, in conjunction with the housing plan and other blueprint policies, we find this as concurrent with the blueprint goals. And moving on to the West Area Plan, again, this is identified as urban edge, similar to blueprint, as well as high, medium residential. And there is a height recommendation of up to five stories with the West Area Plan. Additional um plan policies from the West Area include several housing policies that this rezoning will meet, including Policy E two, explore strategy so affordable housing is available everywhere by implementing approaches that promote diversity of affordable housing options within all neighborhoods and new development, as well as Policy E three, expand diversity of housing types and affordability to support households of different sizes, ages, and incomes in all neighborhoods. Um, with the housing plan in place, as well as the recommendations from those plans, we find this uh rezoning is consistent with adopted plans. As for public interest, uh this meets the goals of improving quality of life for all Denverites, right, uh incorporating more housing options and affordable housing as well. And lastly, this is consistent with neighborhood context, zone district. And lastly, this is consistent with neighborhood context, zone district, purpose, and intent by meeting all the standards of ERX three. And based off the staff report, information shows tonight CPD recommends to approve the application finding all review criteria met. Uh, happy to answer further questions as the applicant is available as well, and we do have a representative from host if there are particular questions regarding the housing plan. Thank you.
I said, we have one individual signed up to speak this evening, Jesse Perez.
Jesse Perez, yes. I thought y'all didn't think I was coming for me tonight, but here I am. Um, Jesse Ashawn Perez, I'm representative for Black Star Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, Shabaka's Black Experience, Enhance the Revolutionary Agenda, and I reside at the CCH on Legacy Loss and the fine now gentrified historically black district of the Five Points. Um, I don't see how this meets any of the criteria, but I'm pretty sure there's nothing I can tell you that's gonna change your mind on this. I don't see how any of this is affordable. This area of town, like all areas of the city, have been rapidly gentrified, and y'all have no process of stopping that. You had this affordability plan, which is a joke, that West Area Plan is a joke. The people that called that area home for generations agree with me, such as my friend David Royball, who will be challenging you, Jamie Torres, for your seat in twenty twenty-seven. Um, I am against this. I don't see how this meets the neighborhood context. All those homes over there are not row homes. They're single-family homes. I see row homes on King Street. They do not match the criteria at all of the neighborhood. They're very ugly, and they do not match the criteria or the neighborhood context of the neighborhood. Every time I go see my sister who lives on, like, Thirteenth and King, I see these row homes, and they're horrible. I see row homes in my district. They do not master the criteria nor the neighborhood context of the neighborhood. They do not beautify the neighborhood. They do not make the neighborhood look better. It looks worse with these row homes. So I don't see how this is even up for public hearing or discussion. I don't know how you're gonna pass this, but you're gonna pass it anyway, like you passed so many other rezonings in Villa Park that the community was against, but you still went through and passed them anyway. So I don't see there being any difference with this one. All I can say is we don't need no more unintended consequences from the rezonings that this council or previous councils have approved. It's not better in a neighborhood context. It's not better in the public interest. It's not doing any of that. All it's doing is furthering the gentrification, even though this area is supposedly vacant right now. The areas surrounding are not vacant. And this is gonna cause the property taxes to go up in those areas, and those people are gonna be forced to move out. We've seen it done all over this city. All areas, northeast, west, south. So I don't see nothing different from this. Thank you.
Recording in progress. Comments by members of council. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam President. Questions first?
Yeah, questions, yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you. Is somebody there from host, Will?
Uh, John is available virtually.
Just one second, Councilman Torres. Okay. We're promoting the speaker.
Thank you, everyone.
Hi, John, uh, thank you for joining on. Um, can you tell me a little bit about the housing agreement?
Yeah, this is the same housing agreement that you've seen in a couple other sites within the West Area Plan memo area. So one unit or twenty percent of units greater of, at one hundred and ten percent of the area median income to be sold, uh, and it'll be a three-bedroom unit.
And John, do you know if that unit will also qualify for the, um, preference policy?
This unit would not typically qualify for the prioritization policy because it is smaller than the one-hundred unit minimum for, uh, development that would mandatorily have to comply with the prioritization policy.
Got it, okay, thank you for that. Um, thank you, John. Um, Will, um, is the owner or the, um, representative either online or in the chambers?
Uh, yes, they are here.
Hello, uh, good evening. My name is Jesse Donovan. I'm representing the applicant.
Hi, Jesse, thank you for being here. Um, can you tell me a little bit about the project?
Sure, so the project is similar to, um, one we are working on, uh, about a block south. It's gonna be a five-unit, uh, townhome project. So it's one building with five units, and we will have a four-car detached garage, um, accessed off of the alley.
Okay. Um, all three bedrooms, is that the model?
Yeah, yes, they're all gonna be three-bedroom units. Um, the height will be twenty-seven feet maximum, which is less than a single-family, uh, home, uh, in this zoning district would, would be allowed. Um, so two stories above and one story in the basement, so one, one below grade and then two stories above.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, do you have any sense of construction timing? As you've got two others, I think, that we've rezoned, um, in West Area.
Um, I, I don't. We're currently, um, working through an S, uh, the SDP process, which is the Site Development Plan. Um, but as far as construction timing, we don't, we don't have a timeline for this one.
Okay. And will you remind me how many face, um, Ninth and how many will face Grove?
Sure, so the orientation is, um, so actually Grove Street is the primary street. So we have two units facing Grove, and then in the same building, we have three units facing Ninth Avenue. To the north.
Okay. Right, thank you. Those are all my questions, Madam President.
Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other members in the queue, the public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill fourteen forty-five. Councilmember Torres, would you like to start us out?
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you so much, Madam President. Um, so I really appreciate Jesse's tenacity and being able to, um, uh, continue working through a few of these rezonings. I take questions from, uh, residents who, um, some are very supportive of the memo, some are upset that we have the memo, um, which has, um, given the guidance that we don't support rezonings that don't come with some guaranteed affordability, um, or income restricted units. And Jesse's, I think, someone who's demonstrated that we can build these and we can also include something, um, affordable that replaces, um, whatever the option that was there, uh, was, uh, to West Denver families. Um, this is, uh, third rezoning coming through. We have others, um, that have come through or are on the way, uh, who are still complying with that. And I think it's, um, uh, pretty incredible that we've been able to, uh, not just, um, uh, build the case off of the West Area Plan that we need affordability or tools in order to keep folks, um, who wanna stay in West Denver housed and give them options to own, uh, in West Denver. I think that's one of the biggest responsibilities that we have. And we've been able to find folks who will deliver that, and those are the works that we want, um, developing in West Denver. So, um, I really appreciate, uh, Jesse and look forward to seeing the projects built. I will also be supporting this, um, and really grateful to host, uh, for fighting this to work with, um, small developers on, uh, income restricted units. And, uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. I also will be supporting this, this, this evening. Um, worked on the memo with you, Councilman Torres, and with CPD. And although some people don't agree with it, I think we would be seeing many more, um, rezonings coming through having not worked on that memo to ensure that we had an affordable housing agreement with each rezoning that came through. Um, gentrification and displacement is real. Um, so I understand what you're saying, Jesse. I bought when I was really young, and so luckily I live in the North Side, but most of my friends don't. So I live and breathe that every day. That's why I ran, um, is to work on issues such as these, um, that we need to have developers who are willing to build affordable housing. So I agree, um, with that, and I've noticed this meets all the plan guidances. We worked on the memo, and I worked on the West Area Plan as I had represented part of, uh, West Colfax during that time.
Seeing no other colleague in the queue, Madam Secretary will call on Council Bill fourteen forty-five. Councilmembers Gonzalez, Diaz, Torres, I, Alvedra, I, Flynn, I, Gilmore, I, Hines, I, Cashman, Lewis, Ramiro Campbell, I, Sawyer, Torres, I'm sorry, Watson, I, Madam President Donval, I. Madam Secretary, close voting, announce results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes, Council Bill fourteen forty-five has passed. On Monday, November seventeen, twenty twenty-five, council will hold a courtesy public hearing on Council Bill fifteen seventy-eight, approving and accepting the Downtown Denver Area Plan, which shall become part of the Comprehensive Plan twenty twenty, twenty forty for the city and county of Denver pursuant to the provisions in section twelve through sixty-one of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. And on Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty-five, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill sixteen thirty-five, changing the zoning classification of thirty-three West Regis Boulevard and fifty, fifty-one through fifty-one fifteen, North Federal Boulevard in Regis Neighborhood, and Council Bills sixteen thirty-six, changing the zoning classification for West three-three-three-three, Regis Boulevard in Regis Neighborhood. Any protest against Council Bill sixteen thirty-five, sixteen thirty-six must be filed with council offices no later than noon on Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Fuck outta here with the bullshit. All right, y'all, so, join me in about three hours, three and a half hours, for, for Black News. Season five, episode fifty-one, part three. So I'll see y'all in peace. Appreciate Twin coming through, appreciate Mac, appreciate Daniel. Anybody else speaking, I'll speak. Peace.